We pray, Lord God, for grace to be upon them. We thank you for the county we live in and we ask your blessings, Lord. We know oftentimes the finances are tight, but we ask that you would move and give wisdom to those who have to make them decisions, what is important, so that, Lord God, those things that get done, that really need to be done first, I want to thank you as they go through this meeting, that your presence will be with them, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you.
I am the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additional changes to the agenda?
Under, excuse me, full business, I'd like to put human resources.
Is there any way we can move the session to eleven thirty?
That should be good. We're going to move the session to eleven thirty. So we have some relevant things on, at nine fifteen, we have Roden Bridge, but we also have fairgrounds that we need to get some issues straight with, that kind of go hand in hand, so if we could do those two together, you know, run right out together, I don't think it'll take much longer, not we're not breaking it up and kicking away, we'll have to revisit it. Also with the prevention management, Kristi Litt and Bob Bonner, they're both talking about the same thing, from what I understand, so I'd like to combine those as well, so that we're discussing it and making decisions at the same time, instead of breaking that up too.
So we're going to be moving programs update up to nine fifteen along with Roden Bridge?
Yes, please.
Prevention Management down to ten thirty, just for me?
No, Kristi's coming.
Yeah, I was going to have it in that there.
Move them, move proposal up there.
Yes, proposal, proposal up with that.
Okay.
Is Kristi or Bob aware of this?
Yes, they, yes, they asked, or one of them asked to do it at the same time, so that they could get off the.
So we're scratching, we're scratching Bob at whatever time.
Ten thirty, and just moving them up with, around nine thirty with Kristi Litt, please. Any other additions or changes? Off of that, Chris, huh? Any changes to the consent agenda, just to start off the court, we need to remove the treasurer's report?
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
I have a motion on the floor.
I second that.
Motion properly seconded. All those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Consent agenda, we pulled the treasurer's report, and is there anything else we need to pull in the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Got a motion on the floor, properly, I'm going to second.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor, properly seconded, no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Be passing down a person who wants consideration for the Western County Library Board, that hasn't been sent to us, but could get.
On the referral for the credit card, this is still within their budget, they just need to get paid by credit card, correct?
There's a message there. While the commissioners are signed, we can go ahead and enter into our first public comment, is there any public comment? We don't have anything to say.
Morning.
Morning.
Thanks for recognizing me. I'm here today to stand for the defense of prayer and controversy that was created at the last commissioners' meeting, which was recorded in the open cassette. And there was some debate on whether the invocation at the beginning of a legislative meeting, in this case, the board of commissioners, was in violation of the Establishment Clause. Now I've taken a lot of constitutional study courses and specialist spaces, and this was backed up by county attorney Stolten. He felt that the county could possibly be sued because it was in violation of the Establishment Clause. So the Establishment Clause reads, the First Amendment's Establishment Clause prohibits the government from making any law respecting an establishment of religion. This clause does not forbid the government from establishing an official religion, but also prohibits the government's action and aduely favors one religion over another. It also prohibits the government from unduly preferring religion over non-religion or non-religion over religion. Now I didn't see anything happening here, we weren't setting up an altar, we weren't lighting candles, we weren't burning incense, we weren't pushing one religion over another. What was being asked to do, and what was voted on, was a generic prayer, to invoke God and invite him to our meeting, ask for guidance and understanding of what we should do. So after the meeting, two weeks ago, I went over to Commissioner Wagner and Uger and Borton, and I gave two facts for consideration. One, I told them that in the United States House of Representatives, they have what's known as the House Chapel. And before every legislative action and session takes place in the House, there is a prayer. This prayer is conducted before four hundred or plus people of different denominations faiths and ethnicity, okay? I also said during the State of the Union, which is both the House and the Senate combined, for over five hundred people, it starts with a prayer, not only before the House and Senate, but before the world. So then I read in the paper, well, they defined the Establishment Clause, oh, we could be sued, and all this hyperbole. I didn't see anybody, including Commissioner Todd, or Commissioner Wagner, or Attorney Stolten, or the opening Gazette, explain how it violated the Establishment Clause. I might have missed it, but I didn't see it. They simply quoted it. All right, so I had three minutes disparity the other day, so I decided to check it. And what I found is, the United Supreme, the United States Supreme Court has ruled on this, not once, but twice, and probably more. But here's one, Town of Greece, New York, petitioner versus Susan Galloway, on writ of sentry to the United States Courts of Appeal for the Second Circuit. This is Justice Kennedy. Justice Kennedy delivered the opinion of the court, except to part B, two B. The court must decide whether Town of Greece, New York imposes an imperishable establishment of religion by opening its monthly board meetings with a prayer. It must be concluded, consent with the court's opinion in Marsh versus Chambers, that no violation of the Constitution has been shown. It further goes on to say, and this is Marsh versus Chambers, four, six, three, United States, seven, eight, three, the court found no First Amendment violation in the Nebraska legislature's practice of opening session with prayer, delivered by a chaplain, paid by state funds. The decision concluded that the legislative prayer, by a religious nature, has long been understood as compatible with the Establishment Clause. I wish you'd look at me and pay attention, because you might, you might serve this county better, if you listen. Okay. As practiced by Congress since the framing of the Constitution, legislative prayer lends gravity to business, public business, reminds lawmakers to transcend petty differences in pursuit of higher purposes, and expresses a common aspiration to a just and peaceful society. See Lynch, first and finally, four, six, five, US, six, six, eight, six, nine. Justice O'Connell concurring, A. Adams, plus E. Emmerich, a nation dedicated to religious liberty, eighty-three, nineteen ninety. The court has considered this symbolic expression to be a tolerable acknowledgement of beliefs widely held, March, four, six, three, United States, at seven, nineteen. Rather than a first treacherous step towards the establishment of a state church. Marsh is sometimes described as carving out an exemption to the court's Establishment Clause, jurisputant, because it sustained legislative prayer without subjecting the practice to any of the formal tests that have traditionally structured this inquiry. Justice Brennan dissenting. The court in Marsh, Marsh, found that these tests unnecessary, because history supported the conclusion that legislative invocations are compatible with the Establishment Clause. The first Congress made it an early item of business to appoint and pay official chaplains, and both the House and Senate have maintained the office virtually uninterrupted since the time, since that time. In Felden, divided by God, one oh nine, two thousand and eight, Madison Detox Smoke More memorandum, three William and Berry quarterly, when Marsh was decided in nineteen eighty-three, legislative prayer had persisted in the Nebraska Legislature for more than a century, and majority of other states also had the same consistent practice. Although no information is decided by the parties to indicate how many local legislative bodies opened the meetings with prayer, the practice is, the practice too has historical precedent. See reports and proceedings of the City Council of Austin for the year nineteen oh nine. And we not, and we desire to invoke thy presence, thy blessing, and thy guidance upon those who are gathered here this morning. In light of the ambiguous and unbroken history of more than two hundred years, there can be no doubt that the practice of open legislative sessions with a prayer has become part of the fabric of our society, Marsh, seven, twenty. So I just wanted to do this, I don't believe it's in violation of a Constitution. I want to thank the three commissioners, they had the foresight to understand the Constitution and the First Amendment right, and the Establishment Clause does not prevent prayer at a public meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Chairman? Since, I'm not familiar with the option, you said, you potentially referring to Western County, you said, and you've called that for over a century. But in my reporting, I reported on the discussion, took no side of it, so, you know, I take issue with you presenting this, though I took any side. I was applying law for a discussion, and some comment on me to whatever readers that were unable to attend to me during the discussion.
And for the record, I saw all the articles, I didn't see anything that was off, but I will say that, I mean, just like saying, you, as you're aware of constitutional rights, that other commissioners are citizens, and they have a right to feel the way that they feel as well. So, I mean, we just.
Well, he was recipe, so can I respond? They have a right to defend the Constitution of the United States, that's the oath they took, okay? Thank you. And we're done, living in fear to one percent?
You know.
Thank you.
We got some important stuff going on.
Yeah.
Feedbacks. Sometimes things take a little bit longer. Okay. So first is Roden Bridge, is Jim here? Jim, I am concluding, as soon as you're done, we talked about this on the call, but I'm going to have the fairgrounds talk, so we can get that portion ironed out as well. Go ahead.
Jim, you guys are aware of the Red Garden Bridge project, moving to Northern Ridge?
So, I'm reading that. That's an additional two hundred thousand dollars, just inflating, right? If, if, if they were to use that, is this all on the county, or is that part of the grant?
I'm not sure, Nate, you know, we pay a percentage, but I think that percentage might be up to a certain dollar, and I'm not after that, it's on the books.
Because we just signed a six hundred thousand dollar increase, I mean, we're, we're talking close to a million dollars now, just out of, of increases, and it looks to me like this, this could get serious, I mean, that's unreal. I think we need to read those, it's pretty serious.
I think it might be within some years in China, but it's just in good shape.
Yeah.
And I did call Randy Riem's minor, he's the state bridge inspector, and they inspect it every year. And he said, you know, the deterioration is slow, if that changes, the mayor recommended we have to call him. You know, the longer it goes, the less we call. And I think, you know, what delays the other project that goes with it too, you know, thinking since we picked that road and the bridges.
So if, if memory serves me correctly, we're in, if that two hundred thousand dollars is, is a cost to the county, now we're in roughly one point two million per a bridge. And I think the county needs to be aware that there's a petition going around that's being signed by a lot of people in this county, that's going to directly affect our county funding, probably if this thing passes, so I think we're going to have some serious places to question where we're spending money.
We're still growling down in Shire, really, we're. We've got about a hundred and two thousand dollars left in the field to hold down. I guess I could have one of the broches, I'd look at you guys, we can only work a four day week in the summers. If our weather were to hold out, if we were to be able to do that now, we could get four more loads a week down there, and it would get us down quicker. If that's something you guys are prepared to do, you know, it's dependent on the weather.
I have any issue with it, if you, if you can do it within your budget, that you work.
Yeah, we're not going to have to do that every time.
Yeah.
When we call, that's kind of what I, I mean, I felt like the board would go under your advisement, as long as it was within the guidelines, and I don't have a problem with it.
You know, if the weather changes, if it, if this is where it may work.
Can you get the, I forget the state guy's name, sorry? On that bridge?
Mike, maybe.
Okay. Only he can come visit with us again, maybe, or even do a phone call?
I can try. I sent the best to get the email, but I exchanged with him.
Okay.
Okay, I can give a hundred of them, see.
This, I mean, that's a pretty major deal.
Yeah, and they're not even, you know, giving us a guarantee, you're, you're not going to do it.
How are those, Jim, how are those overdues in the two hundred thousand exposed, do they define those? What, what they, what they had expense come from?
I, I have about half a term.
It's, did you read that, one contract? It's flagging, and it's probably railroad employees standing around, making sure, yep, that looks good, nope, that doesn't look good. It's sixteen hundred dollars a day, and they're, they're looking at a hundred and seventy-five days, I think, is what they're talking. And it might be on the light side, but it might also be on the high side, I don't, I would be a little concerned, but it might be on the light side.
Is that the one that I emailed you guys, that we're going to discuss and review this? So you guys want to discuss that now?
I didn't see it on the business.
Did she see this? Well, she wanted you guys to just review it, because it's a draft.
Oh, I see.
She said she's going to be sending me quite a few, but she said she has to get the railroad involved in it as well, and she said that's not going to be fun, when the railroad gets involved, but the railroad information is in this as well.
All right, we need your action from the state. A. You look good. Who do you think, Ed? We need to visit with.
I mean, oh. I know if there'd be any, any help from the slip with emergency funding, because it's a bridge. We could go, we could go down there and plead our case with them, they made us some money as some amount of emergency fund, but it's hard to say it's emergency when this has been on the table for so many years. What I'd like to see from the state is what it's going to cost, you know, a black and white number, not this projected stuff, because, I mean, on my personal opinion, we can't, we can't go into this knowing that, not knowing what our costs are going to be, if we don't know what it's going to be at the end, I, I don't see moving forward with it at this point in time. Because every time we turn around, there's another couple hundred thousand dollars here, a couple hundred thousand there, and right now, we're at one point two million out of our pocket, and we don't know if that's even going to be close to what it's going to be. So, and it's, the whole thing needs to be, I think, revisited. So, and it's, the whole thing needs to be, I think, revisited again, wherever we get, if we can get some numbers from the state on that, some definite numbers.
Would they use, would you compare that to a number on the hook for the engineering expenses?
Yeah.
Which would already be quite a good percentage.
We've already baked by then, but cut our losses of what, six hundred thousand versus maybe upwards of, you know, maybe two million? Where, where do we go? I mean, it's, it's not a decision I wanna make very lightly, you know, cutting and running on it, but I can't, I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable walking into this, you know, giving them an open checkbook. It would, my opinion.
Yeah, that, that, the amount of dirt work they're talking and the amount of improvement, that's amazing. I, I think that even if they cost sure that, I think it's gonna be huge added to it. If we can get somebody that has an idea from the state.
Commissioner Board? Do you know, but these added expenses come in as a prediction after the, after the engineer, after the engineer expenses were paid?
Well, I mean, you concur engineer expenses.
Right, right.
I think most of the change is on the participant prices or some different. Concurring with Commissioner Todd, but we're in, we're in their hands with a lot of, even the Rose D eighty-ten, that cost, those costs just keep going up because we don't have any, when they're actually wanting to do it. It's just a projection. So, there's a lot of these that, that we're shooting in the dark and hoping that it's a certain amount, but it seems like it's way more.
And I think I tried to give you two, we tried, I don't know, maybe they indicated another different project, but I didn't see them. Maybe that would have been good down with ours. Do you think you could reach out to this person and get them maybe set up on the next
meeting under our whole business? Which even if it was by, I don't know, even if it's by Zoom, maybe we can get them to meet so we could talk to them. Any other questions for any of us? David? So you have a couple issues you need to go over with us, including an event?
Uh, yeah, we can pretty much have, Commissioner Todd, Commissioner. Um, we talked about the arena. We've had a lot of questions on stuff like that. Communications, I think is a big thing. Right now, we're down and stripping the arena. They're, they're lighting it up. We're gonna haul it out and we're stuck on this. Weather conditions, didn't think some hold this up up this time, right? So, right now, it's being stripped. So, hopefully, we're, we're putting it back in there ASAP. So, I think everything's rolling good there. Um, I did give you a call just as a heads up, we thought, we was told the commissioner to get a call on, on a reservation for the event.
And we did, by the way.
Did you? Um, as far as I know, Billy got involved and he was coordinating with me on that. I believe it's all pretty much taken care of. I believe the way I understood it, they're, they're gonna go to Senior Center this year and then they're gonna need to come back. They wanna make sure they're on the schedule for next year, going forward currently. So, hopefully, that's all taken care of as far as that goes, you know, as far as what we, what we have there. So, you know, I think we're okay there. What we have is we have a schedule if your name's on it. And if you don't have a contract, someone else calls up. Our plan, our, our plan is to call you up and say, hey, you need to get a contract or we're gonna, we're gonna get you these up somewhere else. Contract was never written up. We was told there was, not one, never did show up. That, let's go, we don't need to get any of that. I don't think they just took care of it. We wanna keep you in grace with this, with this information. Um, the only other thing I have is, uh, fair's coming up. We have to start spending money. Uh, I think right now, we have to get your tags and stuff like that. So, I'd like to get that money rolled over so we can start preparing for fair next year. That's in the budget. It's just gonna be a little bit here and there until fair actually gets.
So, I, I wanna make sure, cause when we talked, we had a little bit different conversation. You, you had told me that you hadn't gotten any communication or you were waiting on the, the state of the county for the arena. Is that accurate?
Um, no. I think what I, it was a misunderstanding that I was under the impression that you folks were gonna be putting as far as spending the money. We had been communicating and Billy's talked to him and Eric's talked to him a couple of times. It was just kind of like, well, I guess the big thing, I was under the understanding that he was just kinda waiting on the go-ahead from you guys to, to proceed with it and talk into it. He was understanding that it was agreed upon, you guys were gonna do it. So, and he's jumped right on it. And that's who we're at there.
I had a call as soon as yesterday from Teresa Hershey, who was wondering what the delay was, what the holdup was. I know you reached out to her, but she said that you mentioned to her that she was waiting on the county to do anything.
Well, I guess what I meant, what I meant as far as that goes and to hear the same thing, there was, we're waiting on them to get time to work. Their, their projects out in the county, out on the road and stuff like that, Trump says we, we've always talked about that. So, it has to, yeah, we probably were with them, the county, but it wasn't that they were delaying by just not working. I mean, it was just, they had other projects that they're working on, is what, is what I, I, that, that's what we've always talked about. Okay? I mean, it was always supposed to be when they, when they got the time and the, and the manpower and the equipment, they was gonna start working. That's the way I always understood it from the very beginning. They were gonna be talking about it. And then you asked them if they knew the cost, roughly, we'd tell you roughly what the cost from the very beginning of this. And I kinda thought maybe that's what it was, you guys were just waiting for a cost to get them to go ahead and do it. I guess, I know Billy's talked doing and stuff like that. And we just had to, I think they had to meet people, try to communicate the project. But, we talked yesterday a little bit. I think he already had on his books to go ahead and start it. He's, I guess he got on it today, so. And, and when I called through, when I stopped out, popped Teresa, I, I applied down there, I just gave her our plan and she wanted to strip the dirt, put the dirt in it and move forward from there.
Well, you said that communication is, is the key and, and that obviously is a mix-up in it. The other one is, is that the gentleman that ran your, of that event that was missed called, and again, I got a different story, he's named Senior Center and he would not be back to the fairgrounds.
Yeah, when the gentleman talked to me, uh, we spoke a few times on the phone. Um, the last time, he said he wants to come back to the fairgrounds, he wished, he likes it there. It's a good facility for his event. Um, we tried to shuffle things around, make, make something work for him there, couldn't work. Um, his last thing he said was, he's going to the senior center this year, he was waiting to call, get, gotta call into the senior center. He was waiting to call back to make sure it was, it was a go. And then we'll go there this year. Um, he'd like us to get, run something in the paper, he used to say, hey, um, this, this event has moved from the fairgrounds to the senior center this year, but it will be back next year.
Any other questions?
Thanks, it sounds like everything's heading in a, in a better direction now. Is there, is there a difference in policy that we've changed to help prevent that from happening in the future? Double booking?
Well, I guess the big thing is, whatever was double booked, I mean, he always, he talked about having a, a contract out there, okay? A long-term contract. And I remember when he left, it was kinda like, well, okay, decide what you want, get back, bring it back with you, get something going to you on your own. He never came back in and there was a contract. We don't have a contract like this to put on any game, which we do. You know, we can't go out and just from, from, from word, they thought they was gonna do something on April bound. If there was a missed, uh, miscommunication, yeah, it's as much on our side, it was our side if, if it was there. But, like I said, if we, if you was to call up, that you, your RPM does, we have your name on the books. If you didn't have a contract and, and it came in with an event, we didn't call you first before we ever decided contracts, cause you're on the calendar. You know, we, we was accused of, uh, uh, taking him off the calendar to be, because of something with him. We was accused of, uh, taking him off the calendar because we had a, someone was related to the person that had him, uh, uh, rented. So, it, it was just stuff that was just thrown out there. You know, hopefully, we got everything taken care of. I, I wanna say, we've, we've had a double book before, we was able to take care of it. Um, we just move forward, we, you know.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it very much. Did you have any comments?
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, on that dirt, we're using the end dumps instead of valley dumps, not very cheap valley dumps going in the project, if, you know, it's gonna get cold, but I love going in with that dirt every day, just for the people's and so I love going around and dumping it.
Do you have a expected completion date?
Well, if everything goes good, particularly if it doesn't, it'll go for five days, we can have to get it all done. But, you know, the, the weather coming in every week, so that would change it.
Um, what about our fair money? Our ten thousand dollars for, to put there on? We need it now so we can pay for the bills that are coming in.
That's not a decision that I would make on my own. We have a board that would.
Well, I know, but I'm just, I'm just getting attention. That's what we need. And I would like to, if you guys can go on it today, that would be great.
It's the board's pleasure.
One thing nice about it, but if we don't put it in our account, we have our judges coming in and if they don't get paid right away, like the day they leave, you know, it just causes hard feelings for them, you know? And we do give judges back in some way, and that's the same way with our premiums. We'd be waiting, basically, if we approved it, you know, we're waiting for another month after that. So, we're looking like two months after we give an event before we're gonna be sending the checks out. You know, we can vouch and green pay working, however that money's spent, you know, we're moving forward. I would, I would like to see, this always was supposed to come, we was gonna manage it, do that ten thousand dollars, go on the fair, move forward. But we are spending money. We did, we did purchase your tags and we have them, our, the steers. So, we do have to pay, that, that bill is out there, it just hasn't came in yet.
Close.
No, go ahead then.
Beer first, drink second.
Uh, this is separate from regular bills, right? This is just your.
Just fair. Strictly. It's just fair and, and stuff that we're about to fair.
I would agree that it'd probably be much easier for them to have that in their account and you've got your QuickBooks setup now and everything, so they could take, uh, hold of that and be able to track it. Instead of having to come in and ask us every time, maybe you just found a hundred dollars, it seems not fair to them or us, actually.
That was, the way it was originally was, was designed to do that is your fair money was to go into your check, that one account, keep it that way. We're not signing a voucher for a three dollar premium for this one or that.
That's right.
So, that was, that was the way it was set up is for that, that fair money to be put into your account.
Yeah, we did bring our donations in for stuff that we, you know, like Ranch Rodeo and stuff like that. That gets mixed in there, so.
No, that account was, that, that thousand was for, for running the fair.
Running the fair, yes.
Your other stuff has to come back in regular channels on your monthly collections, like you set up.
Okay, when we, when we do those donations and we bring them into you guys, can we line them for the donations for our fair, like the Ranch Rodeo or?
I would think it would identify it for what it is, so I don't know if that would hurt anything.
So, you guys have been in contact with Paul? You discussed that with Paul, he's the auditor? Ask him how that should be done.
Cause that's the same, that's the same way with the, uh, you know, like when we put on the rancher, we have sponsors for, for fair, but your ten thousand does go to Ranch Rodeo. We have sponsors that come in and has to say, well, they want to spend that money out the Ranch Rodeo there instead of waiting for the month or two to pay.
Cause anytime you get sponsors, it affects the budget and you have to have budget adjustment. You have to advertise that and have the budget adjustment because it's affecting the budget. So, that's why you need to talk to Paul, because it affects the initial budget.
Okay, um, but if it's gone by the time the budget goes around?
It doesn't matter, it's unanticipated fund, so we have to advertise that. Anytime, even if it's a dollar, unanticipated funds.
I was, I was under the understanding when we talked about this before, that any donations or charitable contributions go through the friends of the fair. Uh, that way it keeps the record straight.
We don't have that set up yet. I mean, we're just, that still works, okay? But that, that's a possibility, that's a wrap.
Well, but it's gonna screw up the books if it's done any other way.
We'll get, we'll get with Paul, we'll see Paul tomorrow, we'll talk to him. And hopefully, we'll have our clothes down.
Do we need to make a motion to move their money? I, I would make.
Any other comments? I'm just, you know, it, it sounds like the complicated way to do that to, but the scrutiny
to what, the guidelines that the county has to follow with its money, there has to be that money coming in and going out. So, your donations for running that, the Ranch Rodeo and stuff like that, it has to come, I mean, it's run through the county, it has to come into the county's fund and then be adjusted back out, budgeted back out. But they do it through the friends of the fair, if you do it through the friends of the fair, those donations come in and it can be earmarked for Ranch Rodeo and it can go out to, to the friends of the fair, to the Ranch Rodeo. It, it leaves a paper trail on that end of it there, but it doesn't affect the county's budget on our end of it. That's why we need to, the fair board needs to do it that way.
What do counties do that don't like an organization that runs a fair? This is, goes back to just, let's earn our own money, um, having a rainy day fund or anything kind of checkbook to where we can take donations, um, just like last year. We raised a whole bunch of money for fair and you guys kicked in five hundred bucks.
I'm not sure what you mean by, we kicked in, dude, ten thousand dollars is.
You didn't kick ten thousand dollars in shit.
What do you get for your budget?
We didn't get a budget last year.
You didn't get ten thousand dollars for your fair last year?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Yeah, you did.
To answer Billy's question, I think with, if they're operating legally, then they would be, they would be injecting those sponsored monies into their, into their budget, which is going to be a budget adjustment. Was that the question?
Yes.
This goes back, when we talked about the budget, I'm gonna say this real quick. It always used to be, we waited till July before we got the money for this year's fair. We had our meeting in June of twenty-two, somewhere along the line, someone, they came out to the, that money was shipped and not, not for this year, but it was for the next year's fair. It never was that way until that period of time, so we lost the fair in two years that wasn't, that, that, the budget was there. Instead of now paying for the current fair that's in that fiscal year, we're paying for the next year's fiscal year out of this. And that's kinda what we was doing before. We did get that, you know, in June of twenty-two, we did get the money in June, in July, and that's when we paid that fair. That ten thousand dollars was there. We went to the next year, but we had money, so we paid, we ended up paying the money, but there was no, we didn't. I, I didn't understand what I'm saying. Somewhere in there, we, we had two fairs, but we only had one, one, one budget amount of money that came out. And, and we had, because we always, we always kicked, we always waited till the end of June before we ever got our money for this year's fair. And that's kinda what we used it for. And I think the understanding was that that money that we was getting this year was gonna go to the next year's fair. Well, so, we swapped from going from the current fiscal year to the following fiscal year with that money, so we skipped a fair there, is what. So we skipped a fair there, is what.
What year are you talking about that you were skipped?
Twenty, well, '22, when we got the money in '22, we used it for the '22 fiscal, for that '22 and '23 fiscal year. That's, that's how, that's how, that's how we've always, we always kept it in that fiscal year. But the money that we're giving right now, we haven't gotten this last year, the $10,000 that we have going here, because it was for the fiscal year. Twenty, twenty. I might be wrong, I might be off here. For last year's fair. But when we came in to ask for the money, we was always going for the next year's fair. Is what we was doing. So we skipped a fair in there. We ended up using the money that we brought, our donations in and depleted everything we had as far as the donations. And I understand what you guys that are checking it down to the fair board is doing, so it's your money. If you have, we may need to sit down and kind of talk about, about what we did. But basically, the way I understand it, because I asked the same question in the meeting before. So from now on, we get our budget money for this, that's in here now. It isn't for this year's fair, is the way I understand it. This is for the next, the next fiscal year, which is this one. Coming up, that $10,000 is in there now.
All right, so I think what we need to do is sit down with fair board and, and us, and you guys can show us what you're talking about. Because I think we've done this a few times. This isn't the time for, we've already.
It is.
I don't want to cut anybody off. That's one of the things that I don't like. But we have other things that we have to move on. We have a, you guys want to get fair, your $10,000, I guess, as soon as possible? Is there any other comments about it? And is there anyone who wants to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to allow them to move their $10,000 into their account. So they can start paying their bills for fair.
So I have a motion on the floor. We have a second.
For the week of fair.
I'm sorry?
For, for just the week of fair.
For the fair, for the fair expenses.
Our expenses are coming in right now for this year's fair.
Second.
I have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of giving the fair the money right now, can you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
On their opposed? Motion passes. We'll get, we'll reach out to you, maybe set up a workshop or something.
That would be great, just set the data. I'd rather do it sooner than later.
Vera was the swing voter, right? She's very powerful. What's your, you know, that, you could talk about the chairmanship and everything else. It still comes down to, you need three votes to win stuff. Do you think Vera enjoys that? Or do you think it's just she accepts that's the job? And, and she's taking it on herself to go ahead and be that person?
I think she, from what I gather from watching the meetings, I haven't been to a meeting in person in a long time. But from watching them and listening to it, I think she accepts that role. Obviously, I can't speak for her, but I, I don't know how much I would enjoy being that person. I think it's a hard job. And I think you're in a hard place, especially when you have to sit between those two groups of men every meeting and be that person in the middle. Which I, I think she might be in the middle all the way. I think she might sit between them too.
Yeah, a lot of fur flies around Vera and.
I, I also want to thank Jamie for helping us out for years. We really appreciate it.
Okay?
Thank you.
Hi, Kristy.
Good morning.
And I don't, I don't know if there's a different one up there, but maybe you know, Bob's not there when he roll.
I can't read it from here anyway, so I don't know.
Are you with us, Bob?
There we are.
Can you hear me okay? You're on mute, though. We can't hear you, but you can hear us. We cannot hear you at all. Okay.
Not when you're sitting.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
There we go. We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Okay, so I have Kristy here and you. You guys are kind of on the same subject, so I'll let you start, Kristy, since you were first.
Okay, so I had just reached out to Becky, I think it was like in November, and asked about the problem gambling funds. And the only reason I did that is because there's like five or six other counties where prevention specialists and their local coalitions are helping facilitate those funds. And I didn't know if we had those, I mean, if we had even accepted the funds. So I really, I mean, I don't have a, like, I guess, agenda per se of what those, the use of the funds. I was really just curious as to if the county had accepted them or not and if there was a need for our coalition to be involved. My two cents on the whole thing is I have no, I guess, black and white way of how the money should be, should or shouldn't be spent. My thoughts are that, just like any funds that, I would say that the county gets through grant dollars and like all of our prevention dollars, should be, there should be a group of people to help facilitate the conversation of how that money should be spent. We're up kind of against a deadline because the money has to be spent by June 24th, or June, the end of June, right? The end of the fiscal year. So that kind of makes a difference just because, you know, sometimes having those conversations takes time. But I think that there is an opportunity for our wellness coalition to be involved and to help facilitate those conversations with stakeholders and the communities. I know that there's like, I think, at least two places in Upton that have the machines. And there's one here, I haven't like done a scan to know what's out there. But I think that there's an opportunity for not only just traditional media, but some grow marketing kind of things, like posters in bars and some things like that. But that's not a decision that I would feel comfortable making just on my own. I think that's something that there should be a conversation with people from both communities. And, I mean, whether it be our coalition or another group of stakeholders or whatever, including the commissioners, probably the city councils, whatever, to address the issue. Because I don't know that we really have a layman of the land of what the scope of the problem really is. And not just for this money, but if there, I mean, if there, the scope of the problem is bigger than $7,000 is going to do anything about, then we have the opportunity, if we do it right, to ask for more money if more money comes from the legislature. I haven't looked to see if there's more money that's gonna be available. But we use a Smith-Sig model. I know that's what Johnson County used when they came up with their, I guess, plan to spend this money. I talked to Bill Holly, who's my counterpart there yesterday. And I also visited with Kirk County yesterday. Kirk County is using their funds to go to the VOA, so, used to be Northern Rhodey, Wyoming Mental Health, to provide training for their clinicians. So they have some different training to help people when they come looking for services. So there's a lot of different opportunities out there. Partnering with the Wyoming Council on Problem Gambling, which is based out of Buffalo. It's another option that several counties are doing. So I guess that's, I guess, just the black of the word.
The other county said, do you, how are they using their funds for? Say Kirk County gives to the VOA.
Yeah, so Buffalo, so Johnson County is using some for media, some is print and digital media. And then I think those, maybe about 70% of theirs, because they got more than, than we did, is being used for that. And then the rest, that other 30%, is being used for the exact, kind of similar thing that Kirk County is doing, to provide training for clinicians. And then also providing their home lunch and learns. It's kind of like what we're doing with like the High Point CTC and the Creedom Presentations that our coalition is doing, where they're just providing information to community members or, you know, stakeholders in the community about the issue. And they're partnering with the Wyoming Council on Problem Gambling and that. So I know those two specifically. Like, I don't know for sure what like Teton County is doing. I know that they're partnering with the Wyoming Council. And I know there are some counties that just didn't even take the money. So, that I talked to when I was in the last season.
Your, I, your work with these people directly, how do you feel is the best way to get in contact with them? To get them, to get to contact the people who are needing the help?
Well, I think it's kind of like when we do anything, kind of like with our suicide prevention lifeline or, and like our, Wyoming quit tobacco. It's kind of in the places where they are. We've had really good luck with things like our posters or, you know, magnets that are stuck, things on bathroom stalls. I mean, you kind of have to meet people where they're at and when they think they might need the help. And so those kind of non-traditional things are things that in the past, I have no idea about the gambling piece, but when we've done things like tobacco cessation or suicide, suicide prevention or those things, I mean, those kind of niches. It's one of the best things we ever did was hanging things in the bathroom stalls of high school. Like, we got more hits on stuff doing that than we did on anything else. I mean, in the 20 years I've been doing this, that we've ever did. So it's kind of random, but. And that's why I say just asking people to know the community.
Kristy, when you see the coalition, is that the 21 Wellness?
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's a broad range of different folks that are.
Broad spectrum. Yeah, I mean, there are 63 people on our listserv list that get our information. About six to eight of them come to our monthly meetings. But that ranges from all of you guys to all, both school districts, law enforcement in both towns and the counties. VOA is pretty active, probation parole, children's center. I mean, it's kind of a gamut. Some business owners too.
Any other questions? Bob, if you want to jump in and your, your portion of this?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I provided a proposal that actually the Johnson County folks put together with my business partner in Buffalo that I presented to you guys. I'm a little frustrated that we're at this point and I heard Kristy say we're up against a deadline. I formally chaired that committee, very active on it. It was called 21 Wellness. And have been very active in this effort in Weston County for two decades. On March 31st of last year, I emailed Kristy about this with the Buffalo proposal and what Buffalo was moving forward with. And she at that time told me that she was gonna wait for a direction from the county commission. I heard nothing until January. And I reached out to the commission chair and said, have you been? I knew a deadline was coming up. And said, have you guys heard anything about this? And Chairman Taylor told me that he recalled hearing something about this, but that nothing had ever, that nobody had ever appeared, that nobody had ever seemed too concerned about it. It took him a while to, I said, well, I've got a proposal ready to go. I just need to know how much money the county has so I could fit Taylor the proposal to it. And what I did, what you have in front of you is the Johnson County print proposal. And I added what you all are familiar with, which is our digital add-on package. It's a six-month proposal that would blanket Weston County and as you, one of you noted, last time I was before you, and well beyond, because my reach goes well beyond Weston County. These are state funds, so in this case, I would have to say that's a very considerable plus. Normally, I agree, I'm, I was ready to work through this process last March and April. That is the way it's been done in the past. It's sort of ironic, the newsletter journal's been left out of this process for the last couple of years.
Bob, that's not true, because your staff is on my listserv. So don't say you've been left out of this process. Your staff is on my listserv. So don't go there.
Well, when did I come off? I have the same email that I had when I was there. Why was I removed?
You're on there still.
Well, look, we're not, we're not.
Anyway, my recommendation is, I asked about this in March and nothing was done until I brought it up again in January. You're now up against a hard deadline. I have an exceptional proposal on front of you. I discounted it by over $1,500 in a desire to get this house, get it done. At least one family that I know of in Weston County's been impacted tragically by this hard deadline. The fact that nothing was done and that we're up against a deadline now, that's certainly not my problem, but I have a solution. And I want to answer any questions, Bob Markowski.
I just want to clarify that when Bob reached out to me, I knew nothing about the funds. So I don't want to be the pawn in the middle of this game by any means. But I, I have no prob, I mean, I, Bob and I have worked together on a lot of things. I don't have a budget anymore to do media like I used to, which is the reason why we don't do a lot of media. We've been running media, print media in both newspapers for our, our latest work, just because that's what we have a budget for. I don't think there's an issue with the proposal by any means. My concern is that we're missing a target, a large percentage of the population by only using one media source and online. I think that there is something to be said for there being things posted and placed where those machines are at. I mean, those machines are not, I mean, I am not an expert on gambling by any means. I'm better off to throw $20 out the window on my way to Deadwood to actually use, do it. But I think that there's things that we can do where those machines are placed to help with some of those issues. That doesn't, I mean, that doesn't change things like, you know, the online betting and all of that. I mean, that's a much bigger issue. But I think there, there are, it should be multifaceted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that the online gambling is probably the focus of this and where the biggest problems do exist. So the online package that I put in front of you would reach that specific target market. And some of the ads you see specifically address the online gambling. Most of them do. Where this is a problem for people is when they get in trouble on their phones, just like a lot of people do with a lot of things in this day and age. And so I would suggest that the, the machines, you know, I could, heck, I'd throw in $500 worth of coasters or whatever print products. If 21 Wellness would like to put something like that together for me, I'd certainly throw that in and have the capability of doing that with my business as well. And would be ready to go and could incorporate what we've got already right there. I would add that. That would bring me up to over $2,000 and discounting to the county in an effort to get this done, because it needs to be done. But I can't move any more than that.
From my understanding from reading all of the paperwork, is the funds have to be expended by June 30th. So basically, go forward and, and send out.
Would you be willing, if he put in like coasters or something, would you guys be willing to put those out? If he was willing to work with you?
Yeah, I will. I mean, the coalition meets the same, the same day, every month, same time. The fourth Tuesday of every month.
Well, I would say.
It's new, and so we can talk about that at our next meeting.
We have a deadline coming up and if we don't spend it, we're not gonna get more. That's unfortunate thing about this. If, we, we do have a need, I'm sure, as, as all the other counties do with the gambling machines. We're always gonna have a problem with that. There's always gonna be people in need of help. So, you know, I feel like Mr. Bonner put this together and gave faith to do some, it looks like some very nice ads and things on, online that perhaps somebody will see and take advantage of. And maybe the Wellness Commission next year can be more involved and do something different. But because we have a deadline coming up, I think we need to seriously consider Mr. Bonner's proposal. I think we need to seriously consider Mr. Bonner's proposal.
Commissioner Todd?
So, I would like to... I'd like to... Weston County Gazette, I mean, are you guys interested in advertising too? An op-ed for this, for something along these lines?
Well, yeah, sure, of course we would be. And I can't speak for the publisher, but 21 Wellness is very proactive in advertising papers.
I guess, personal feeling on it, I would rather it left in the hands of a professional and then everybody get together to figure out a way to divvy it up. I don't think... Talking to you and it's not the... I mean, it's not tomorrow, but...
To clarify, you mean to put it in her hands?
Yeah.
When you said the professional?
Well, not necessarily all in Kristi's hands, maybe in more in the Coalition's hands to then make a decision. And if they want to use it all in the Newsletter Journal, if that's what we decide is best, or they decide best, I don't have a problem with that. I just think that then at least gives a few people to get their foot in the door to have a week or two to decide if there's something valuable that they could add to the community.
Commissioner Todd, you know, I'd like, whatever direction Coalition decides, I would be in support of that, because I don't gamble. I don't know where it would be the best, you know? You know, the Coalition, they know, and they've seen where the best, they got the most bang for their buck and where their campaign worked the best. So, I would, I'd be a favorite, you know, letting the Coalition decide. And wherever they decide it needs to be spent, that's where I would go with it.
Does everybody know, is this the first year that proposals and... Is this a new process?
Like, as far as gambling funds go?
Well, yes, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think, like, several of the counties started working on it last summer, I think. And so, I think it was just a process of however those funds... Because like Kirk County, it was just, they were just working on theirs. So, I think it just kind of depended. I don't know how that worked. So, there are some counties that have been working on it for longer than...
The reason why I'm asking is, is everyone aware that they can send a proposal in, for example, and apply for these funds in benefit of Wellness 21? Or is this only a select few knew about it to even submit a proposal?
As far as these funds?
Or a proposal?
Well, so, I mean, we didn't, I didn't solicit anything. And I just asked when I, I think, like, November, when I was here, like, if the funds had even been secured. So, we haven't talked about it from a Coalition perspective, because until, I don't know when was that? January was when Becky let me know that, yes, you guys had, were going to receive the funds. So, as far as us, like, soliciting proposals or any of those things, the Coalition hasn't even been, had a conversation about this money. It was definitely something we can add to the agenda from a meeting in two weeks. That's not an issue by any means. But yeah, the Coalition hasn't had a conversation at all, because until a few weeks ago, I didn't even know that the money had been received, which is why, I mean, I had not responded to Bob, because I didn't even know you guys had the money, so... Or if I was going to be, which is what I had told Bob in the beginning, I didn't even know if the Coalition or if I was going to be involved in the money, so... And honestly, it wasn't until Nick had been at the meeting and said, "Hey", because Nick is a part of our Coalition as well, saying, "Hey, the one of these things be available, you might touch base." And so, that's when I touched base with Becky the first time, so...
But I definitely am grateful that Bob put a proposal together, but I kind of think since it's in June and we're talking about it, even if we push this to old business or decide to let you guys handle it however, if an opportunity could be given for someone to submit a proposal that wasn't able to, but... Obviously, it seems as both newspapers are part of that same Coalition.
Right.
So, I just was curious why that wouldn't have happened. Somebody knew something.
Right, yeah, and that's exactly why, because we didn't... I mean, the Coalition hasn't even had a conversation about it. We didn't even know if we were going to be the ones being involved in the funds. And typically, the way that works for the Coalition is, like, when we get together and we're planning something, we're planning this education series that we're doing, it's a matter of, okay, so, how's the best way for us to get the word out? So, a lot of times that's social media. Most recently, it's been ads on KSL and it has been ads in both newspapers, print ads in both newspapers, so...
Commissioner Todd?
Just out of curiosity, Kristi, do you think with enough, with the two weeks' notice, if this was allocated to that Coalition, could you, would you guys have the ability to spend $7,200, $7,500 roughly, isn't it? It's not much more than that, but to allocate that at that meeting and decide if it's...
Um, I think so. Because I guess what I would, would, just kind of thinking quickly in my head, was would invite, it would be great to have a commissioner and then if Nick is there to represent the town of Upton and very seldom do we have someone to represent the city of Newcastle, but that would be great to do it. And then a couple of those, probably bar owners, the newspaper staff, and then our regular Coalition members, just to reach out specifically to them and say, "Hey, we're going to be having this conversation. This is the main topic of conversation. We'd like for you to be a part of it." Can't make them be there, but definitely an invite to be there and be a part of the conversation and then for us to decide at that point what the best way to be forward would be.
What's the opinion of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
You know, if I'm in here and all this... Now, as I put this together in my head, it seems to me that the county clerk contacted Kristi about this after I contacted you about it. So, who knows how far down the road we'd have gotten before anybody would have addressed this?
When I...
Am I wrong?
No, what you were right about is, as I told you when I talked to you, is I saw an email that had Kristi's name on it and I didn't realize it wasn't from Kristi. Your name was on it, so then, that's how that came about. I didn't know anything really about this until that point. So, I only read part of the email and I thought, well, somebody needs to know the amount of the money. And I actually thought originally it was Kristi, but when I read the email, it was your request, so that's why I got you the amount from Becky.
And I do appreciate that. I just, I'm struggling a little bit. I'm struggling a lot right now with, you know, you ask, "How do people know about this?" This was written about. And the Cheyenne Capra News, every, every, I mean, there were news outlets all over coming that carried stories about this response. And I shared one of those stories on March 31st with Kristi last year. And she said at that time that she didn't know if she'd be involved at all. And I waited, waited, saw other stories come out. Another one came out in Gillette then in the fall. And that's when I sent the email and approved. Do, I guess, I'm, you know, if the Wellness Coalition, I'm concerned about the Wellness Coalition, because I notified Kristi in March that this was out there. You could read about it in any newspaper.
So, Bob, what are you asking then?
So, I would, I would, I really struggle with any suggestion that we should real quick throw a bunch of people together and try and come up with something, when I've been working on this with my partner for over 10 months and have invited others to participate. And now, all of a sudden, when I read, you might be, if I wouldn't have sent that email to the chairman asking about this, this conversation might not be happening till February, March, April. I don't know when somebody was going to, whether it was Miss Lip or the county clerk, when somebody was going to take initiative to meet this deadline. So, any attempt right now to quickly throw something together seems like a great deal of effort to, I don't know, do what? When you have a professional proposal from somebody who's been working on this issue for close to a year now, in front of you?
And I appreciate the proposal. I don't think, you know, putting it off for two weeks is, you know, making sure everybody's on the same page. I'm not suggesting that the proposal isn't good and I'm not suggesting that you shouldn't get it. What I'm suggesting is, is that we put it off for two weeks to make sure everybody's on the same page and let the Wellness, what do you call it, Wellness Coalition, let them decide how they're going to spend it and then we go from there. So, I am definitely not against it going to the Newsletter Journal. I just think that we need to be looking at it in a way that, hey, is there a way we can do it better? This might be the best proposal that we get. That's all I'm saying. So, and it's really up to the board at this point, so... Go ahead, Commissioner Todd.
I'll make a motion.
So, do I have to present for the Wellness Coalition, Mr. Chairman? Or you require, or would I still be presenting my proposal to the commission?
I'm not.
Does the commission get an invite?
Yeah, let me, let's see what the board says and then we'll figure out a game plan from there. Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to allot the gambling funds to the Wellness Coalition in a fair attempt for a bunch of professionals to get together to best decide how this money is spent.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Glad to hear that.
I, I guess I have a problem with that in that I don't have a problem waiting two weeks and perhaps giving them the opportunity to discuss it and come back with a proposal like Bob gave us. But I don't, I don't feel comfortable just giving them the money when someone else came to us with a legitimate proposal to use it in a proper way. I, I think that would be biased on our part.
Just so everyone knows, Kristi approached me in November wanting to be in charge of these funds. She just didn't know when to be on the agenda. Dawn contacted me in January, let me know that Kristi had asked if all of these funds had been spent. I contacted Kristi in an email, let her know that the funds have not been spent. Asked, she asked then if she could be put on the agenda. Dawn then contacted me, told me that it was not Kristi, that it was Bob Bonner. Kristi approached me long before this proposal was put together, clear back in November. So, just to clarify, Kristi did approach me in November.
But, but no one's come forward with a proposal like Mr. Bonner. So, I, I feel like just handing funds over to 21 Wellness perhaps isn't very fair at this point.
I would, go ahead. Question for Commissioner Todd. Where in your motion, are you allowing the 21 Coalition to expend those funds or put a proposal together and present that to the commission?
I'd say let them expand it. They're the professionals in the county with this kind of, these kind of issues. And if they choose Bob's proposal in two weeks, they can let them know. I don't think it's a bad proposal. And if they choose to take $1,000 and do something else with it and only run five months of ads with Bob, so be it, whatever. I, you know, I think they're a better, probably a better caretaker of those funds than I am, not knowing addiction issues within the county.
I think it should be acknowledged that he has obviously put a lot of work into it and that he was on it, so I, maybe that's in consideration. But I don't, I don't see more than two weeks for them to decide, now that everybody seems to be on the same page, is an issue. And I think you should consider the fact that he's spent the time on it, but that's just my opinion. So, we have a motion on the floor. Any amendments to that or even... No more discussion? So, we'll put it back on the old agenda. And then, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I'm in motion. I'm going to say nay on this one. If you'll please come back before us in two weeks and let us know the outcome. I appreciate it.
Okay, so you want me to...
I'd like you to work, me and the board would like you to work as professionals to decide what's the best use for this money. And if it's Bob Bonner, great and...
Come back on March 5th, if I was looking at my calendar, right?
Yes.
Is that right? No? Oh, it's not every other...
It's the 21st.
20th.
Okay, so our next meeting is not until the 27th of February. I can try to put a group of people together prior to then.
And that's where the interest of getting it solved and...
Right.
You know, it's June's going to come around fast and for fairness towards the Newsletter Journal.
So, I mean, that's our next scheduled meeting. I can, I can do my best to try to get a group of people together. Is there someone from the Board of Commissioners that would like to be a part of that conversation?
Be a part of that? When do you meet?
Well, we usually meet at noon on that fourth Tuesday, but if we're going to be doing this prior to then, prior to the meeting on the 20th, it'll have to be next month. If you could, perhaps if you get a meeting put together and email, excuse me, email all of us the time and date. We'll try and get at least one of us there on one day. Okay. And then come back on the 20th.
Okay. Anything else?
I would just invite you all Thursday at noon, if you're available to come. We have a presentation on, it's making direct trends, but it is really based on a lot of the herbal supplements that are being sold in our convenience stores. So, Krainavikaba that alters opioid-like effects. You can pick them up at Short Stop and you can pick them up at Maverick, so they're readily available in our community. Lunch is being provided. It's at noon at the Newcastle Lodge and then in Upton at 6:00 with High School Commons.
Thank you. Thank you for your proposal, Bob.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you to everybody.
Be attached.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're on to, since we have those other ones, the informational article with Mr. Attorney Curly.
Oh, Mr. Curly, I like that better. I'm here as a citizen. Thank you. I submitted a document, Becky, I suspect it was distributed.
Yes, they should all have a copy.
Pardon?
They should all have a copy of that.
As usual in these matters...
This one.
Hard for someone to get around to reading documents. But I'm here today because I'm aware that there are citizens that will be coming to the board, asking the board, and I'm not doing that today, but it's coming, asking the board to declare vacancies for the positions of Weston County Representative Senator and Weston County Representative. And I'd like the board, if it does pass the resolution after due consideration, to do so for a justifiable reason, one that will tend towards success if there are any challenges in court. This is America, so there will be challenges in court, right? And I think it can be done and I've set out with enough detail in the document provided grounds which you can look at more thoroughly when you're sort of moved. Fundamental question here is whether we live in a society with the rule of law or not. If you don't, then your life, your liberty, your property, your subject to the vagaries of the mob or the whims or the autocrats. of the mob, or the whims, or the autocrats. You don't need to be a lawyer, thankfully, thank God for this, to understand and know America's contribution to the rule of law is the written Constitution, American constitutionalism. Basically, it's the instrument by which the people entrust power to their agents. U.S. Constitution starts out with, in moral words, "We, the people of the United States, do establish this Constitution." The Wyoming Constitution was done in open convention in Cheyenne, 30th of September, year of our Lord, 1889. Delegates, a lesson for delegates to that convention was held on the 8th of July, 1889. And their work at the convention was approved by a statewide vote on the 5th of November, 1889. There was some unseemly haste in all this in order to try to get it before the U.S. Congress on the issue of admission of the state. But Wyoming's in the American mold that started before the Revolution. Virginia and Massachusetts, Vermont went and joined the Union, uh, and others. The people, when they went to a new territory, Tennessee, they, America, they had conventions. They, the people spoke, the people set up a government and they set limits. That's what it means to have, by the consent of the government, an American. And that's the main premise, which I don't even state in the handout because Americans know that. Our governments are there because they have constitutions to set them up. Now, more particularly, I want an argument, if it's successful, if the board goes along with the coming resolution, that maximizes the chance these issues stay in Wyoming courts or decided under Wyoming law by Wyoming judges. And it can be done in this fashion. And brief. Districts. What are districts? For legislative election purposes, our state constitution required that the Wyoming House and Senate shall, elections shall be by district. That's not a federal requirement, that's state constitution. State constitution says each county shall have, constitute a senatorial and representative district. State constitution says each county, or in this case, district, uh, shall have at least one senator and one representative. And the state constitution says this is the ratio, not less than three nor greater than three times in, uh, in the House than the number in the Senate. I'm referring, when I say the state constitution, to Article 3, Section 3. Now, Wyoming got along with that, elections, uh, reinforcements, redistricting, uh, for years and decades, until the U.S. Supreme Court in the 60s reinvented what the 14th Amendment due process clause means. They come up with, means one man, one vote. And it means there has to be a substantial if you district. But that's not a federal requirement. We could outlaw our, at large, elections in the state, for the House and Senate. But if you district, there has to be a substantial equality of population among the districts. All right? That's federal requirement, that if you district, you need to comply with this equality requirement. But it's not authority to district. That's state constitution. In 1992, faced from federal court pressure, Wyoming Legislature, or a committee of the legislature, asked all the counties if they would accept reapportionment, uh, districting for reapportionment purposes, that in certain cases, had districts that did not follow county lines. And ever since, 1992, the Wyoming Legislature has created what I call free-range districts. They just make them up. They have no constitutional authority to make them. They're not required to by the federal constitution, but they make them up. The resolution that's coming for your consideration asks, argues first, there's no conflict between the two constitutions, even the federal judges have admitted, and this is all in the handout, that Wyoming could comply with both. You just need more seats in the legislature. You could also change the ratio requirement, but that would be called amending our constitution, which the legislature has not sought, asked the people to do. So... The districts that are constitutionally and therefore legally created are county senator, county representative. Federal courts created no districts. And no authority for districting. Those positions are constitutionally created and they're vacant. Notice, in that view of the matter, it's Wyoming constitutional argument to Wyoming judges that have the right of judicial review, which means that courts are asked to rule on the legitimacy of legislation by a government bounded by a constitution. Courts, Wyoming courts can say, as they did in the litigation over, uh, Hill, who was elected to be Superintendent of Education, and then the legislature came in and said, "Ah, we'll give all those powers to another unelected appointed, uh, person that's headed to Department of Education." Of course, Wyoming courts have a imperative duty to see that the legislature legislates within the bounds set for it by the Constitution. And they undid most of what the legislature wanted to accomplish with Hill. But you have the same situation here. No central issue. The Wyoming Legislature, the people have polled how the district, they just blow it off year after year. Which means, in my view at least, and I'll end on that, we're not a free people or in great danger of not becoming not so. Freedom is not a state. It gets achieved and then your grandchildren enjoy it. I believe freedom's an activity of something you do or you don't have it. Thank you.
Liam, I got a few questions. I, I've been aware of this. You showed this to me a few weeks ago, whatever it was. I just got a few questions and I'm sure you've thought of this because I don't have the word of mouth to think about this, but vacancy as, I mean, is there a set date that this resolution is gonna declare that vacancy? That you're, is it immediately or would it be at the end of the term of the current?
The resolution, in the format that I've seen, I have in front of me, it appears to just be a proposed resolution, uh, that if adopted, declares those two constitutionally created positions vacant and requests Republican, County Republican Party to supply three names for each to the commission so that they can select some persons to fill those vacant positions. I haven't seen anything, any proposed language that addresses timing.
I guess the reason I'm asking is, is in effect, aren't we saying we no longer, um, recognize Senator Driscoll or Senator Steinmetz and potentially even Representative Slagle with this resolution? I mean, do you see a problem with that?
I do not. I am aware, you know, people are just different. I don't see a problem, and I've had discussions with Allen, as far as I understand, he doesn't either. Because the proposed resolution says nothing about Driscoll or Allen's positions. It just sticks to, and I, and I hope if the board passes it, it sticks to the constitutional reasoning, that our constitution created districts, they're vacant, we want to fill them. The fallout, the domino effect, who sues who, who brings it up as a political issue against an opponent, all of that, and who can afford help? I myself think ultimately, the legislature needs to get a proposed constitutional amendment before the people so that we have a more workable guideline for the legislature when it comes to districting. So we can comply with both constitutions and not have too huge a legislature. It's something they've avoided doing since 92.
I guess that, that was my last concern.
And so I don't care if there's a few people whose toes get stepped on, if things don't always work out optimally for everybody, I think the discussion needs to be had. This will get it to Cheyenne, this will get to Secretary of State, this will get it to the Supreme Court, this will cause people to think in terms of fundamentals, what the hell is our legislature doing, blowing off what the people said they are to do?
Yeah, and that was my, my biggest concern in asking about that. I mean, in, in a way, there is gonna be people that say, "I voted for Mr. Driscoll, so you're taking away my vote in a format by no longer recognizing them." And, and so I don't, you know...
I like that. You two have just lived through, or was did in this nation, all the squealing and yelling over, "Don't get rid of Roe v. Wade." All the liberals said, "Don't do it, there'll be horrible consequences." But once it was gotten rid of, all the liberals said, "Oh, now we're free to go to our state legislature and we can pass even worse laws." And they're busy doing it. To don't get, so I, I would caution from the viewpoint today, looking to the future, sure, we can foresee certain kinds of people complaining, but I wouldn't bet nickel that if this passes, they won't end up being on the other side.
No, I think so. I, I mean, I think everybody in this room would say that the best thing for the county is to have representation within the county. I just think that I, I, these were just concerns.
And I, I agree they're legitimate and people are gonna deal with them as different people deal with this.
For me, I'd like to do just a quick flow chart as how I envision this. And it would be if you pass the resolution when it's presented and declare vacancies. The next step is that the Republican Party supplies you with three names for each position. The next step is you choose a name for each position. And the next step is you send that resolution with those names to Chuck Gray. From there, it splits into three places. Chuck says, "No, we're not doing this," and it could get dropped right there or somebody could pursue it. Or Chuck Gray says, "Yes, I accept this, it's constitutional." You now have this huge foundation of the Secretary of State saying, "Yep, Weston County can do this." So then the next step would be, how do we deal with our ballots in August? And then somebody's gonna sue, they're gonna sue the state. I don't foresee they're gonna sue this county because Chuck Gray has accepted this. It's gonna be a state issue and let's see where the ball goes. And the third option would be that Chuck Gray sticks it in his desk drawer and doesn't do anything. Then it's still back on, do you just drop it, possible? Or do you wanna pursue it? That those decisions can come later. I don't, I don't see it as a scary proposition. If Chuck Gray says yes, your ball's rolling really fast. And if he says no, go ahead.
And we, and we have the opportunity to fill a vacant position and there's not, that position was potentially held by an independent, which we're looking at a position that isn't even existing at this point in time.
Au contraire, at law, they're the only ones existing.
Who is?
What, in this county, Weston, for the legislature, Weston County Senator and Weston County Representative.
Well, okay, but we're, we're, we're gonna only do the, the Republican Party? I, I'm looking at it, if somebody that's...
Uh, go on.
Do you, you know where I'm going now?
I, I think it, go ahead.
Okay. Somebody that's being replaced in this county that is non-affiliated, potentially, is then appointed by the county commission, I don't think it's the precinct that does the selection, is it?
Not precinct, not the precinct level, the county, exactly committee level.
So then would this potentially fall into that lane instead of...
Well, what I'm thinking, based on your pro, question and prodding, is that the proposed resolution, the language that I've seen, that's, I believe is coming, assumes...
Very...
It assumes, and that's a good point, it assumes that if vacancies are declared, they were filled by Republicans, that will turn out historically to probably be true.
Probably, but...
But you, but you're right, it does make an assumption and we should, somebody should do the work to be able to answer that question. Otherwise, I would agree with your not yet expressed, uh, thought that the, the language to be a successful resolution should be broadened to take account of, are there independents in the position, are there Democrats in the position, and so forth. Uh, thank you.
Question. From my understanding, there's already a resolution that was approved before this board.
Yes.
Another board. So it's a standard resolution. I'm not sure...
A resolution of what?
A resolution supporting this process. Um, and like I said, correct me if I'm wrong, when it was explained to me, there was already a resolution done by a previous board. Not sure that previous boards, that wasn't polled, that resolution wasn't changed, wasn't amended.
Resolution 1403, as far as I understand, expressed the board's support for what I'm calling constitutional districting as opposed to a free-range districting.
So...
And, but it did not declare any vacancies.
Oh, that's what I was gonna ask you. So, in full support of this, according to the Constitution, it's been talked about many times by, you know, these, these meetings that we've had on the, on the concerned citizen side and the constitutional classes that we've taken, so... So what you would do to amend that would be add those vacancies and, or what changes? Because the county, that board supported it before.
So, well, you say, yeah, it's a big word that covers everything, including changing diapers on a baby.
Right.
So I'd like to be more specific. The fourteen oh-three resolution did not support declaring vacant, any, did not support any particular path forward. It expressed that Article Three, Section Three should be adhered to when the state, it's, so it's, it, it encouraged everybody, including state officers, to adhere to the Constitution, but it doesn't take any steps that are now being proposed.
Okay, and that's what I'm asking, is what, what steps need to be added? And how does it differ from that resolution that is in support of this?
Well, what some of the citizens apparently have come up with is that we could get the ball moved forward from fourteen oh-three if vacancies were declared by our board commissioners. And then, and we have someone with a crystal ball that attempts to lay out in a flow chart possible future scenarios. I've expressed the hope that the ultimate scenario is constitutional amendment to make more man-made Wyoming election that adheres to the Constitution. So that's, that's what people have come up with, some people, that this declaration of vacancies would move the ball forward politically, and she's probably right, would get it within moments, I don't want to say hours, on Chuck Gray's desk.
Thank you.
I, I just have a question, have you, through this, have you worked at all with other counties that, that have the same problems?
Well, yeah, some of us have tried for fifteen years. Running different issues in different counties. I'm not surprised, in our national life, we, apparently, all body politicians accept, and has since maybe before Roosevelt was president, that we don't need to follow the Constitution. We just need to spend money on legislation.
Do you feel like if you go forward with this, that other people will then jump on board?
Yes, there's lots of people we know, aware of in other counties, that would very much like to have a bandwagon to jump on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two things, one, first of all, Mr. Taylor brought up a point. We passed the resolution and said, yes, we want to return to the Constitution, but no action was taken. This is a follow-up to that to say, here is the actual action. The second part, I forgot what I was going to say.
It's okay.
Senior moment. We, the Republican Caucus, had a meeting three years or two years ago, and we had unanimous vote that everybody saw that resolution that we now have in place here for this county. Every county voted for rescinding of that. I think the, the momentum stopped when they stopped. They just, they just stopped, I don't know why, but we still have different counties that want to do that. If we change our county, and hopefully we do, but it is a constitutional thing, then the two other sister counties, if you will, will have to comply too, because they will, will they end you? They will not be able to represent, so.
Mr. Chairman. I'm putting my remarks with this thought. If this board passes this coming resolution, or a reworked version of it, depending on historical facts, I would like to do so without any mention of anything federal. In a recent county Republican Party meeting, a regular meeting, this matter was discussed somewhat. And I sit at the same table as Allen, and he spoke up, and he said, basically, I agree with what Paulie's saying here, but, I mean, this whole problem is created by that darn one man, one vote, that federal, and I cut him off. Rude of me, yeah, but he accepted it because I said, Allen, you just illustrated to all these people what you don't do. You don't convert this with a few ill-chosen words into a federal constitutional issue that will be dragged into federal court, settled by federal judges with federal law. This is about Wyoming Constitution and Wyoming Legislature, and the duty of Wyoming judge is to say, legislature, live within the limits set to you for your powers by the people. Cover what you say, no federal bitching.
Got a question for you. You had the three different results. What happens if we move forward with the resolution, declare these spots vacant, and it goes in a desk and sits there? And we declared them vacant as a board, and it sits there? Do we lose our representation on the state, on the level then?
I don't think so. It could, I think it's a really good question, but I don't see that. If, if it becomes in that fashion, a dead letter, our county clerk's going to run the election in accordance with directions out of Cheyenne, which will be, since it's a dead letter, follow the districts the legislature created, even whether they ignore the constitutional issue. That's what she's got, does that sound right? That's what she's going to do. And we'll have an election like we had last time, unconstitutionally founded, but everybody's going to let these district people back in in Cheyenne. I don't think it'll change. If it becomes a dead letter, nothing will change.
Well, I, you know, we seen on our last redistricting, the boundaries changed to who they would have to run against and who they wouldn't have to. That was very clear, the way the boundaries were drawn.
Isn't that interesting? That clear constitutional language that everybody knew in advance, if they'd follow county lines or district lines, is now subject to the whims of backroom dealmaking? And no one knows in advance what the deals there will be struck, they're going to be. That's a loss of liberty.
By being down there, we left Cheyenne twice with our county being whole. And it came down to the last day of the last, minute of the last day, that the deals were made, and we got split again.
Yes, Niagara is way out ahead of us in terms of experiencing this kind of, uh... Death by, by ignoring, two, two people will ignore them, you know, but the other counties are coming.
Our two sister counties, we know they're not very crooked. What happens if we get the ball rolling and they decide, oh, we're washing our hands, we're backing off, leave us hanging dry?
If, mission, if the board adopts a proposed resolution or invented, then I would hope, one of the things that happens is, board members that support the resul, support the resolution, with a good understanding of why it's a Wyoming constitutional issue, would talk to fellow commissioners when asked, why'd you do it? What's going on there in Weston County? Because it's not a fly-by-night theory, it's fundamental American law that everybody invites in third grade up. Our government's created by the people.
When we read this last redistricting, we got left high and dry by a fellow county.
Yes.
And I'm afraid that'd happen again if we get the ball rolling. We get left high and dry again, then we're at the mercy of whatever they want to do to us.
All right, when I learned in physics, when something makes no difference either way, it's something you don't have to consider. County got screwed without you taking the ball and pushing it forward, and now you're afraid it will get screwed if you take the ball and push it forward. So it makes no difference, county's going to get screwed, then you don't need to worry about that issue.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My question is, there are a lot of what happens here, and what happens if you do nothing? Nothing changes.
Let's, uh, just devil's advocate on the federal side of it. Let's stop in that being the approach from attorneys on the other side of the, the matter. Like, you want us to leave federal language out of it, but, I mean, once it starts, this ball gets, it rolls into court.
Thank you. And I'm sure, no matter what your reasons for passing it, if the resolution is passed, some, more than one will want this in federal court. So I'm looking forward to arguing, Judge, kick it back to state court. There was no federal issue when those commissioners did that. Not a single commissioner attacked the Fourteenth Amendment, not a single commissioner attacked the U.S. Supreme Court, not a single commissioner said you shouldn't have basic equality amongst the county and the districts that are created. They all said Wyoming Legislature should comply with the Wyoming Constitution and the limits of power set by the people. That's what they said. So I, I think you're right, plenty of people for their own, I won't be kind about it. I try to be kind, for their own, for the same reasons, will want it in federal court, and they'll want to issue, argue federal issues, so don't bring them up.
Any other? Thank you, guys.
You've got to remember, who certifies the election?
Our state elect, or which election you're talking about? Secretary of State?
Pardon?
You're talking about the Secretary of State?
No, I'm talking about you guys.
Oh.
For the county.
Well, you have to see if you're on that road to run into that curve.
You hold the power.
Mr. Chairman, members, thank you very much for your attention.
Appreciate it, thank you for coming in.
Thank you all.
Roger, sorry for the delay, that's my call.
Oh, my boy.
Oh, Barry. I hear you. Hear you from.
Thank you.
So, I'll apologize upfront because the curve dropped out. I can't grant everybody a copy of this, but I do have a copy, and I'll leave it here. And I'll talk to, hand that around and look at it, the pictures, I'll show you the pictures. I'm sure you all know I'm with R.R. I said I'd break some pictures to show you what, what we're doing up there. What you'll see on the front is, the, this is our main building. And, and I'll talk to these things a little bit, this is a auxiliary type building. And then this over here is the building where we're crushing product and bagging. We actually put a super bag in for a few, and they're going to be transported. Main building where the facilities are. This building will be expanded on this end by thirty-five feet. And this first picture is just a little view from the other side of the, where we'll crush it, that the main building. This is the area they're working on to expand to thirty-five feet. And then, then the last bunch of pictures are really just taking out the size of the building, the main building. And this is all rebar that went into the footers for that expansion. Because you have them around the outside, get them around the outside, and you have them, you have them across the middle. Takes a lot of support for some of that stuff. So I'll talk a little bit about where we're at. The general contractor is on site, Law &amp; Growth, they've been on site since December. And Gerald, I always get this wrong, Jaren Milton is the project manager. And Jim Blasky is the project engineer. Site work is underway. We have all our permits, we have everything that we need, we have the money from the government. But we're waiting on the state fire marshal to approve the plan, and, uh, so we can start working inside. But in the meantime, we've got a lot we can do that are allowing us to clear out the building. So we're clearing them out, all the site work's being done. The sewer line, which is pretty much done now, we, the sewer line runs from this building toward the east and actually ties into the city. When the city owned that industrial park, they actually ran water lines and sewer lines up there. So all we have to do is just to have it tied into it. Unfortunately, it's in between two tracks, which are tidying. But we, we got that done, and it's run up to where the facilities are now. As I said, the, the main building, we're going to do that thirty-five foot extension on. We actually are going to be pouring the concrete and all of that, you can go ahead with that one. There'll be a lab and a control unit at that building, as well as all of the, all the plant equipment. The prep building is the one where we're going to crush things. It'll remain open on that end, because we're going to have a crusher set up on that end. And then, then after everything's crushed and bagged, and it has to be crushed down to a quarter inch. But it's really fun. It'll be bagged, and it'll be moved to the other building, it'll be stored in there, and then moved to the other building if we need it. There'll be another building that doesn't show up here, which is a backup generator building. There'll be a backup generator installed in the building for that, it'll be on more, the northwest side. There'll be an office building over there, and there'll be a chain house and lunchroom on, on that far side of the building. During construction, they will have thirty-five to forty of forty there during construction. And then, I guess the other thing to talk about, material purchases, you know, the, 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 you know, our plan is to do what business we can locally. The equipment, the equipment all arrives FOB plant site, but there's no sales tax on that. That, because I was asked that question at, up in economic development, you know, that there's not, that there is property tax. That would be, if stationary equipment, so that it'll be included in property tax, which you guys are, will be Weston County. So we're installing right now time-lapse cameras so that when we're done, we can show the progression in the time lapse. They're pretty, I know you've all seen those, they're pretty neat. We're going to, you know, once it's operational, which we think will be about ten months. We talked seven months, but the way that permits and approvals extended that back out, we said seven to ten, we were thinking of ten. So, once it's operational, we're in the process right now, and we're going to be going out for a bid for a contractor to operate that plant. So it could be somebody from here. And from this area. And that, it'll have thirteen to fifteen employees once it's operational. And during our test period. Once the test period is done, when the new plant is built. And it will be, if you look over the top of these buildings, which would be more or less about northwest, about a half a mile over there, the property that we actually own and where the plant site, the permanent plant site will be. So theoretically, this plant could be taken apart of this stuff. However, as, as we get more and more bad vibes from China about cutting roads off on RAR, where it is, it's also a good possibility it won't be discontinued. Because the government owns half of it. Well, they don't really, but they gave us half the money. So they could have some say though. So that'll, that'll remain to be seen. I'm sure once we're done with it, you know, we're already working on, on the mine permits now. And we don't have to do a new EIS. We just have to amend that EIS. Department of Energy already told us that. We already got permits for the roads. And so that's kind of where we're at at the moment. But I'm planning on coming back every month, like I said, to update you. If you'll put me on every month, I'd be great. So, any questions with this one?
Yeah, Roger, just a question on the, what rare earth resources are going to be focal at this plant?
What are they?
What resources? Yeah, which, which resources?
All of them. It will actually process all of them. The, the big five we're looking for are the ones, and don't make me name them.
Okay.
Go to our website and see them. I'm still learning how to name them.
And one other question. What kind of, what kind of traffic are you anticipating? Obviously increased traffic with the plant. I'm just looking at mainly the employees, and you got like construction crews?
Thirty-five to forty.
Okay. So you probably already have noticed some increase in traffic.
There's already been that many people there. Once they, they move part of that construction crew out. And when they start building on the building, which they figure is going to be the middle of the park, so they probably back into the swing. Then that's, that's when you'll see the thirty-five to forty people. And we differ, it'll be that range, but there'll, there will be some people come in specifically to set the, the plant, feast it up. There's a lot of it modularized, I mentioned that to you before. So, but then he's answering your question here. The top five that we're looking at is the ones you know, for magnets. Because that's, that's the big deal. You're following your computer, your electric cars, we're further upstate around here, but. If that's, you know, all of that, the magnet is the big thing.
Do you have Jimmy's, Hanson's phone number, Roger?
What's that?
Do you have Jim Hanson's phone number, our road, our road guy?
I do not.
Is there gonna be much large truck, traffic in and out of there that's gonna be beating up that county road?
The most part, no. There, the, the equipment will come in. And it's modular, but I said it's modular, Roger, so it will be individual loads. And I couldn't tell you exactly how many loads that'll be, but I'm gonna stay somewhere in that twenty range.
In the secondary plant, if it comes to fruition? I'm a little vague on the location you're describing. Will that also be along county road?
When you come in, when you turn off the highway and you go.
Hit the T.
Yeah, the T. You go west to get to this facility.
Yeah, I know where this one is.
You're right. You would go right.
To Don Bartel's old property?
You go right about a quarter of a mile, and then on the west.
Left side, yeah.
Southwest, northwest side of the road.
I know what it is.
And that's what we, right there, that's where the permanent plant will be.
Where that monitoring station is out there, or whatever they do. So there is potential effect, county road.
County road.
Yeah.
Because when the, when the mine, the big plant starts, it's fifteen tons bigger than that. We're ways away from that.
Yeah.
But I will keep you up to speed on that. It may get, it may speed up. You know, it really depends on the world.
If you're, when the big plant's up and running, what's your, I mean, proposed tonnage to come in there per day of product?
What's the proposed, what?
How many tons of product are coming in there a day? I mean, it's, just, it's a guess.
It's, that very, there's only a hundred thousand tons a year produced worldwide. And that's China or North Korea, which they still control, and then Taiwan, actually, that's part of it, those are smaller. And it's a different process, you know, it's a different process than this one, but a hundred thousand tons go there now because they're the only people that can process it. And so it's not as much as you think. You know, if, if we did twenty percent of that, you know, you're looking at twenty thousand tons.
So really, in, in the big picture, tonnage, it's not a lot of tons of truck traffic coming in.
No, no. In fact, things I can tell you, if, if we were to haul product to that plant site, we figure we can do five trips a day for half the year. And, or more, or decent weather times of the year can happen. It's, it's not, it's not a huge amount, but it's, it isn't, it isn't, because it doesn't take much. You know, if you look at what's in, the kind of magnets that are in your phone or computer, this, that, you couldn't see them. I mean, they're so small, they are. You know, for those of you that went up, and then you, if you saw the magnets we have, they look like a refrigerator magnet with a hook on it. And they were on that piece of channel line. There wasn't anybody can pull one off. I mean, you cannot, they are so strong, they're. So it doesn't take much. And so, but the process is, I mean, the, the process is very complicated. And it is a process. And it takes, it takes time to process. This plant will probably process just about, I'm thinking, two to three tons a day. So I'll, I'll let you know for sure next time, but that's.
Trying to get you to perspective, it's gonna be very minimal compared to the fracs and.
Yes, not a coal mine or a, a gold mine or anything like that. It's, it's very valuable, and it's all of that, but it's, it's not a huge process. Any other questions? Thanks for coming in, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Next time I'll probably have a new printer, I'll have enough for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I just approach to give the county clerk my statement from earlier? I meant to give it to her, for the record. Thank you. Thanks, Stan.
Thank you all.
I'll let you know when it's.
Old business. Are we open? Yeah, we can move. Yeah, we'll start our old business at eleven thirty, we'll have an executive session, so we'll make sure we jump into that, and then we'll get back on that. Employers Council renewal.
I, I did some research online because they're not the only ones out there. So I, I got a list of the top ten and did research on the top three companies. I actually got the most information by reading reviews from people who use those companies. The one big thing that stuck out with all of them is they seem very reasonable, a print, cost-wise. And they get you in a contract for a year or two, and then once they've got you, picked in, they bump you up. Because at that point, all of your documents, all of your forms, everything, all of your major files, everything is in their system. It sounded a whole lot like Vaultsite. Like, you know, you give them full reign to set up your, your whole HR system. And then they say, oh, by the way, it's gonna be three times cost now. So I honestly didn't come away with much good during the research. During the research, I happened to call a woman here in town that I knew had done human resources work to see if she'd ever worked with any of these companies. And as we got talking, this is gonna go into the HR stuff that I wanted to talk about. She would actually be interested in contracting with us to do work for us as our human resources person. She's uniquely, in the time of her life, where she's starting her retirement. So she doesn't need benefits. And she doesn't look to make a lot of money because she's already getting her social security benefits. I, I would like to give you her, her resume to look over, and I would really encourage you to possibly have her come in because the amount she, she talked about, like a monthly amount that she would be willing to take, was very reasonable. I don't want to talk about that publicly right now because I, you know, I think that would be an executive session thing. But very reasonable. And she felt like if we got her going, she could get up a whole system set up for us, all her files, tracking, training, and everything, she could have it all done by June. And then she would be willing to do training, like such harassment training, office policy training, the new handbook training, all of those things, and, and set up a tracking system. And then possibly be available to us on a, on a contract to take care of HR issues as it come up. And she could have a phone number that people could call when we have issues. She could possibly do some work for us as commissioners, be a little bit of our assistant in helping us maybe do communications and whatever else we would want her to do. So if I have permission, I'm not sure because we haven't, I hate to say her name and everything because we haven't talked about it. I don't know how that would go. But I'd, I'd like to just give out her resume so that people could look at it. And I would recommend that we have, next time we meet, have her come in and interview with us. And see what happens. She, her last human resources job was at the Nani Camp. She's very well respected in her field, so. I was very excited, it just kind of happened that I called her for something else, and we got to this team. This is a really great possibility for us, so I mean, copies for everyone, if that's okay. Is that okay, Michael, that we do that?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, last year, we did, we did vote in session to, to actually hire somebody, and we never did. And there hasn't been realistic candidates that we could afford anyway, but this came up, so. I would say that the difference between what some of these other companies that work with hourly's online, that will do your, your HR work and have a hotline for your hourly please, would be more expensive than using her public. And we would have somebody local. So that's that part of it. Since I'm talking, can I go ahead and, and talk about the handbook bids? Did you see that? Or do you?
You've got five minutes.
Okay. I, I reached out and got a couple of local bids for printing of the handbook. The bids are for double-sided pages, because it's longer, it would shorten it up, and then you wouldn't have to split up the book in any way. And so I got two bids, one of them is very reasonable. I thought it would be in three-ring binders, so you could change out pages if you needed to. If we had a resolution to make changes or updates, then the pages could be changed out without having to reprint the whole book. So I wanted to, to let you look at those and see if you would be interested in moving forward and giving permission to hire. So that's with three-ring binders, double-sided pages, and two dividers, one divider where definitions are, and one divider where the appendix is. And then a colored front page.
I suppose you would do it.
I would, I would like to make a motion to hire Sage Rush Marketing to do the printing of our new handbook.
Motion in the court.
Second. I have a motion in the proper second, discussion.
And according to the quotes here, that looks like they're pretty much identical. Same information presented.
Yes, I gave them the exact same information, quote un. And I actually, we probably won't need sixty five books, but I just gave them that number, it's higher than probably we need.
And that's sixty-five books in three-ring binder?
In three-ring binders.
Any other discussion?
What are you gonna pay for, Becky?
What's that?
You need to figure out how we're gonna pay for it.
Was there any put aside for this at the beginning? Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Do, do we need to backtalk? Do we need to make a motion to possibly have an interview with this person?
Yeah, you could do, you could do that. Make a motion out of command and do an interview. Do a request of a, we'd have to have a motion, but we can request out of command. Are you thinking sooner than the next meeting?
No, I think that would...
So, we can just have to put on the next meeting, have a comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead. Of course, then it'd be age-restricted on YouTube.
We have Becky looking up financial admin, what's left in the...
One fifty-one.
One fifty-one.
So, do you want me to make a reminder to my motion? I make motion, I amend my motion to approve Sagebrush Marketing printing of the new handbook and take it out of financial admin.
Second. Have a motion, it's been amended with a proper second. Any other discussion? All those in favor can say aye.
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 Others opposed? So, we're going to suspend our full business and we're going to...
Got a competition for the longest password in history, mankind.
That's not my password. It was Charles's.
And you haven't changed yet?
No. He hasn't been able to do that.
Oh, my gosh, I think...
But it's a phrase, so it only has to be done once a year.
I can't type that well. The other thing, if you're honest, I'll type it in as...
Somebody else work on that when we get to the bingo?
Yeah, I don't, it's not bringing backup, but please.
Gary, go and turn that microphone back on.
We should have just did a... Uh, why isn't that...
It's what I thought. He said close it, which I did.
No, we should have just put leave me.
That's what I did.
I keep getting it out of your way.
No, it's...
See if it works better.
It's on the calendar too. Pull. All right, we'll continue on with Vault Site. Where are we at with Vault Site?
I just still need to contact, get, hear back from Mr. Campbell.
So, do we just need to push that to the next meeting? All right.
Our track's out. You guys gave her blessing in this last meeting, so.
Attorney attendants at the meeting would like to say thank you for, you've been here several weeks in a row making, you know, yourself available or having the, one, somebody here, so I, I'm sure the board appreciates that very much.
Yeah, we got the schedules. We parsed it down better than last time, and it looks like, right, Jeannie, the one judge that is usually here on Tuesdays is Costano, and then there's one Healy day. Looks like there's eight days this year out of twenty-four. I think most of those times, Jeannie will, I think she'll be down here most of the day. She, it's likely she'll be down here most of the day, so she, we can probably, one of us up there, one of us down here, flip-flop as need be on those days.
So, we don't need to adjust any schedules at this time?
I don't think so at this time. If Jeannie's willing to do that, I'm not going to.
Yeah, we can try to tag team it the best we can and...
I appreciate that. So, we can take that off. They're going to try to be here without making any time adjustments by the board.
Some of those days will be in opt-in.
Oh, yeah. Okay, oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll have to think about it. We don't know the opt-in days yet, do we?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we, you guys did just...
Last middle quarter.
Tuesday, last... I can send them to you.
I can. I can probably figure that out. I hope I can.
Okay. Onto new business?
Nope, we have security policy, but...
Oh, that's right.
Brian never sent me that, so I'll just remind him to get that to me.
I got a question on that anyway.
Wasn't he here?
No, he left.
Does anyone know why we would give all the city cops a copy of the key to get into the courthouse? Why are we going through that expense?
I have no idea. Gilbert just asked me to get them to him and...
There's things weird to me, like why would they need in here after hours? I mean, I mean, if there's one somewhere, I can understand maybe, but just things, I don't know.
Well, that was when we first got them. There was one at the detention, and that's what that one was for. If, for some reason, a deputy wasn't here, they were to get, the city cops were to get that key. And then, then they had me make one for all of the city cops.
I guess that's Brad or Gilbert.
Yeah, it's just strange, why, every cop needs a key to our building, you know? When if, if there's one of dispatch, they could pick up, it's right here. You know, dispatches or detention, they're manned twenty-four hours a day, so there's always access to a key.
Did, did the sheriff offer us that?
Well, he's, he's the one that first talked about it and then the lady, and then Gilbert asked to have them done, so I don't know.
So, we could put it on the next agenda and ask him what the need is for that. Maybe he's unaware. I don't know. Handbook signatures. Pass them on to us, because we don't have to sign them, every one of them. One at a time.
Use your best pen, just.
And then, did you want to get that to Jen?
Yeah, I'll get with Jeannie, and we'll get it to Jen and get it going.
Thought it could be the black sheep, sign it in some other color, I think.
Did you?
No. They're all blue.
They're all blue.
They're blue. It's the closest I ever came to being a doctor.
Public comment.
Not the, the...
Traveling view?
Yeah, that one we discussed with Randal Bridge.
All right. So, anyone have any public comment?
Can I?
Yep.
I, I forgot something I told you about, and Stan asked me about it. The two bids that I received, Sagebrush Marketing was $733.20, and Wilder Graphics Design was $1,415.97. Thank you for pointing that out, Stan.
Just in the friendly amendment, maybe, maybe you could move it till after the, at the end of the meeting, just in case that gentleman comes back.
Well, that's true.
Oh, yeah, where did he go?
He might be in there. He told me he was staying, so. Probably told him to...
Right, and he said about a quarter after, so.
Yeah, thank you. He'll be back. He, he just was going to grab something to eat, so, yes, thank you for that. So, we'll do that again, but, Commissioner's comments.
So, a couple of weeks ago, I was handed a big dang paperwork like this at a meeting that says you want to sign it, and I said, "Well, I don't know. What is it?" For my signing, and he says, "Well, it's a signature page. It's the People's Initiative to Limit Property Tax in Wyoming." And, which he didn't say that, he just said, "Well, don't you want 50% off on your taxes?" And I said, "Oh, yeah, I'd love to have 50% off on my taxes." But I think in fairness to the county, I think people need to be aware, I mean, this, this property tax that this initiative is targeting is potentially going to cost the county about a million dollars a year. And this is direct funding to the county. None of this money goes to the state, none of it pays for frogs in Jackson Hole or anywhere else. This is direct county funding. Our, I don't hear that our bridges are too good, our roads are too nice, our emergency services get there too fast. All I hear is the opposite of those things, so, you know, I'm all for property tax relief, and I think that there's workings in the, in the legislature with it. But be aware that I have a gut feeling that this is probably going to pass and it will take effect in 2025, but we are probably going to be looking at employee cuts. I don't know how you cut three, three, four hundred thousand dollars a year on a budget short of that, I mean, so. And it's, when it takes effect, it's a two-year deal. I just think people ought to know what they're signing.
I'd like to, you know, just echo that. People don't realize, they think all their tax monies comes to the county. Very small portion of it comes to us. We need to educate our public, and Jeremiah sent out a deal to all of us, and just the public that's here. How many mills do you think we have to have to make up for one of Campbell County Mills? Just a guess. We have to have twenty-eight mills to equal one of Campbell County's mills. That is, that's, everybody across this country thinks a mill is the same from county to county. It's not. It's, it's based on your assessed values. So, and that's something that we really need to be aware of in this legislative, the upcoming legislative session, is reach out to our lawmakers, tell them, "Hey, don't cut our, don't cut the hand that feeds us on our taxes." You know, everybody wants to see lower property taxes, but where do we start cutting services? Is where it's going to come out of. So, I don't know. Now, I've got one other, just a quick update on our landfill. We did a walkthrough on our cell and our leachate collection pond. We haven't done the final payment for it yet, but we, where we're at now on the new landfill is building some scales. We're waiting on all that stuff. Otherwise, we have a hole that is properly permitted and properly lined for garbage. So, that's my comments.
Thank you.
Good job.
I have one. Just to kind of update, we had you guys, the other Commissioner Todd and Wagner, were not here for the special meeting that took place. One, I just wanted, you guys obviously knew the result of that, to sign that document by the deadline. As a new chairperson, you know, I have lots to learn, just like we all did probably the first time we sat in the seat, but I wanted you guys to know the process into that. First, I thought we could do some type of a email agreement, which I did check with the county attorney, and he said we probably could have done that, but liked a special meeting instead. So, I called the special meeting. There were some questions about the notification, so I pulled the Public Meetings Act that from the Legislative Service Office we put in there. I don't know if there was confusion or it's in more than one place, but when you go to special meetings, the required notice is eight hours prior to the commencement of the meeting. We did notify the newspaper. We did notify both newspapers, in fact, and they also put it on the website. So, if there was any concerns on the, you know, the notice, all that is in, if anyone wants a copy of it, of the Public Meetings Act to, to verify that that meeting was handled and it was in accordance with the county attorney. So, I just want to make sure that everybody knew that that's why that meeting came up, and that's why it was needed because that deadline was for Friday.
And I thought for the short amount of time that we were here, Drew did join us, and a couple of questions that I had on that. She was very, Drew is worth her weight in gold when it comes down to helping us out. She is like Nathan brought up, a professional in her own field, and she helps us understand exactly what's going on, what the signatures are for, what it's, what it's going to help prevent, and, and how that, that executive order by the president does trickle down, and that's how they were trying to backfeed this, is from the top down rather than allowing the people to speak on behalf of their own 15%, is, which we have in Weston County that's national for us. So, she was very informational and helpful in explaining that.
There you go. She's worth twice her weight in gold. That gal is very knowledgeable.
Very lucky to have her.
Thank you, guys, last thing is, is I want to apologize to the commissioners, being new to this too, we have an agenda that has certain times on it, but I wanted to be honest in the fact that there's certain things that we, we are some more, you would say are more important than others, and I agree with that to some degree, but everybody comes to the commissioners meeting, including the public, to kind of have their words heard, I will not, unless it gets out of hand, I will not cut it short, or say your time is up, it may affect the people that are coming in, that you could say, well, that's disrespectful to the ones that have a time, but even those people have a set time, I'm not gonna cut them off to the minute, or even to the five minutes, so that we get all the information that we can to hopefully help with making better decisions, I, I will pay closer attention to times when we put things on the agenda, and see if I can guess how much longer, but giving someone five minutes or five minutes here, 10 minutes there, and cutting them off is something that, any, another chair can do that if they want to, but I'm not going to do that, so I apologize, I should have probably made that clear to the commissioners beforehand.
But I've also got a suggestion, Joe, I don't know if it would be helpful, I don't know, we're, we're trying to end the meeting pretty much the same every time, if we, if we stretched it out, if it ends sooner than, than where we were at, would probably be more respectful, maybe a lot, a little bit more time for some specifics, and then just plan for longer.
I ask them how much time they want, and they all say 15 minutes, that's why they're all given 15 minutes. They don't want longer, the ones that do, I give them a half hour.
I'm just, I'm not aware of any statute that says we're here for nine to 12, or nine to 11, or nine to 10, and my objective is not to be here at my convenience, it's to be here for the peoples.
So, just point of information, I am the sponsor for People's Initiative here in Weston County, and I've been collecting signatures. If anybody has a question about that, or can make a comment about that, I'm just making myself available, if you'd like it. Because our properties are not assessed at assessed or praised value, they're assessed at fair market value. And I can give you a personal example, because my neighbor sold their house last October for over $500,000. It's probably really only worth $300,000, two years, three years ago, that's probably what it would go for, but with the people coming in from other states, selling their properties for outrageous amount of money, coming here and willing to spend outrageous amount of money for properties that aren't worth that. So, because of fair market value, I'm now going to get, without any capital improvements to my property, I'm going to get an adjustment on my taxes, because my neighbor sold their house for $500,000, they're gonna tell me that my house is now worth $500,000, I'm gonna be taxed at that. That's why our taxes are skyrocketing, nobody's against property taxes that I know, but how can that be legal, I mean, how is that tax agency representation when my property values don't represent any improvement, any increase in value, but I'm going to get taxed now on $500,000? There were some initiatives in the last legislative session, and they've got put in the drawer, and then never taken out, okay? There's people being trashed out of their homes, not necessarily in Weston County, but in other counties in the state, like Keaton County, senior citizens are being, their property taxes are going up by four, 500%. So, we the people said, well, if our legislative body cannot take care of the problem, then we're going to take care of the problem, this is the People's Initiative, we the people of our own, are taking the steps to at least get it on the ballot so we can have a conversation. Nobody's saying that we don't need these monies for bridges and roads and all this other stuff, but what's happening, and I alluded to it when we spoke before, this is a huge windfall, and I was at the school board meeting last Wednesday, and the auditor, same auditor that audited you guys, says that in '21, '22, the increase in property tax, $800 million. Now, granted, the resources and the minds and stuff pay a lot of that, but let's just say it's the people that pay 20%, that's $200 million increase, unexpected, out of nowhere, and now everybody's saying, wow, man, if we don't hold on to this money, we can't build bridges, we can't build roads, we're gonna have to throw grandma off the cliff, you know, the commercials, the Republicans, we're gonna have to throw grandma off the cliff, because it's, so, I understand, nobody's proposing no property taxes, but it's, it's unrealistic and it's unfair, it's not fair, it's unfair, that because my neighbor sells a house for 500, 600, a million dollars, my house is now valued at that. Try to get that if your house perds down, try to get that half a million dollars if your house perds down the ground with your insurance company, because they're not gonna pay it. Anyway, if there's any questions, I can tell you this, we have raised over 500 signatures here in Weston County, we only need 427, but I want to point out, just take a moment, and point out something that's very important for all, everybody, Democrat, Independent, whatever, what we're finding out is, there's 20% of the people that think they're registered to vote, but they just purged the, the voting rolls about three or four weeks ago, if that person did not vote in the general election, they're purged. And I have a master base, a database, and I got people, husbands and wives, signing, and I ask everybody, you registered to vote, they say, yeah, and then, when I look them up, they're not there, and their addresses are buried, this is a problem that we often come on election, that we hope to address also, because it, like I said, these people are not being nefarious, they believe they're, they're voters, they believe they're registered, and they're not showing up on the database, either for Democrats, because I got, not just Republican or Democrat, I got a whole list, so, anyway, if there's any questions, you know, sometimes when the legislature still lacks, we the people have to take, take the reins.
Did you get your list from Kerry Drost? Did you get your list from Kerry Drost?
Nope, I got it from actually Campbell County, it's a master list for the whole state, you can look up people by address.
All addresses would be there, so they must not have gave you Weston County's addresses? Addresses don't change in a purge.
Okay, I'm not saying you've got changes in a purge, what I'm saying is, these addresses that they're giving me are not showing up, either in Republican.
They must not be giving you the right addresses, because people's addresses don't change.
Either way, it's a problem that needs to be addressed, I, I don't, you know, again, I don't know.
They might not just be giving you the right address.
These are people that are pretty passionate.
When they're signing.
And they want to be representative of what they're doing.
And Becky's a Francis, now Becky's off.
Oh, I wasn't saying, no, I'm not.
No, that's what I'm saying, they must not be giving you the right address, because addresses never change, ever.
Right, and I'm, believe me, I'm not saying, it's good to purge the voter votes, right? It's good.
It's, it's sad that they don't vote in the general, too, and that's why they get third pick.
Yeah, I understand, it's great, it's a good thing, that people get them off, all this other stuff, yeah, I'm not complaining about it, I'm just saying, in the process, people think they're registered or not, so I didn't tell them to come here, talk to you, straight get out of the process, thank you.
Thank you. We actually, we're waiting on you to come back.
He told me to go to lunch.
No, no, it was, it was us, so, Ron, you want to come up and tell us your experience with the fairgrounds?
I can stay right here.
What we were told is that the problem's been resolved, we're not getting back next year, is that? Is that, do you finish?
I haven't heard that.
Okay, that's why I wanted to hear your, your version of it.
No, I just came in to, my name's Ron Briggs, I live in Weston County, I'm a volunteer fireman on the Highlands Fire Department over at Elk Mountain, we're mutually aid to all of Weston County along there, so, we're part of this, this area too, we've done a fundraiser for the last three years at the fairgrounds, and our president, we booked it the night of the, of the event last year, and then he came in to put his deposit down this, this spring, and he said, oh, we took you off that date, and you're out of there, booked it with someone else, so, we did find another location, but I just wanted to let you know that's no way to do business with a repeat customer, because if I have anything to say with it, we won't be back at the fairgrounds, so, my wife's the treasurer, and I just wanted to make sure everybody knew, knew what happened, and I, I would like to know why it happened, so, is there anybody who can tell me that?
Our understanding from the people that came in is that they talked to you, and that it's been resolved, and you were gonna be at the senior center this year, but back next year, that's mistakes were, you know, something wasn't wrote down, or the deposit wasn't given, I, I mean, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but that's why I wanted to hear from you, that it was, because my understanding was, it wasn't resolved.
Well, maybe you have more information than I do, as far as the last information I got.
Go ahead.
I was gonna ask, Ron, are you the, the contact person that the fairgrounds contacted in resolving this?
No, I'm one of the board members, actually, we have the fire department and we have an auxiliary. So, the auxiliary's a separate organization, we're the ones that do the fundraising, you know, and that's who handles that, but, now Randy Miller's the president of the auxiliary, and he's the one that went to pay the deposit, because he told me that the, when he booked the, the night of that, you know, when we did it last year, they said, just wait and give us the deposit in the spring, and when he went down, it's not even spring yet, he went down to give you the deposit, and they said they're off the, off the calendar, not there anymore. So, we got no notice, we already had flyers in our social media and everything, and he was just concerned because we've had it there three years in a row, people are confused and all that, so, and I just think it was, you know, whoever made the decision to just wipe us off the, off the calendar, I don't really understand that, so.
We appreciate you coming in, sorry you had to wait, and we hope that you'll consider coming back to next year, it was an error, and we just need to get it corrected and have the communication there, so.
Well, there's gonna be some, some, some discussion about prices then if we come back, so, you know.
Okay.
Sorry I had to go through that this year, Ron.
Give us a donation to the event, give us some free publicity, in some way, shape, or form, but, we're good, but I just wanted to make sure everybody knew what, you know, what happened.
We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
I also say it's not the assessor's fault either, she's called the law, it was made in 1987 or 1989, that hit a praise value, replaced with fair market value, so we're not putting the blame on any government agency in this county.
Got you.
I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
I'd like to make something clear too, Stan, I'm not telling you it's a good thing or that thing, people just need to understand that there's consequences to it, and, and I think that the consequences could be, because the state is statutorily required to backfill our schools, they're gonna pull money from somewhere, however, they probably are not gonna pull money from somewhere to backfill the county on any, any format, which may also lead to another tax on food or something else, to replace this lack of funding going into these schools from the, the county itself, so, I mean, it's a slippery slope, I, I think that, I mean, I hope that our legislate, legislature can get something figured out, I really do, because I don't like paying, I paid more in income, or more in property taxes here than I paid in my mortgage principal. So, I get it, believe me, I just, but there is consequences, and it, we're gonna feel it, and I really think it's gonna pass.
And it will not, it will not affect the school district, because.
It's in our state constitution, that's, that's seven, well, basically, three quarters of every dollar goes to the public. But you're, you're right.
I just wanted to.
We're having a conversation.
A little, I was, I just wanted to throw a little input there, too, my, my old man worked out at Jacob's Ranch for 38 years, and. And they had a program out there, they call it the bone pile, and they would be talking to, obviously the coal mine still had, you know, they had a, a budget, and they would even say, hey, you know, things are very tight, you know, we've got to adjust these, and, and, and there's reasonings that we're, we're running our business the way that we're running it for the, the budgeting reasons that we have, but anybody that worked at the coal mine could go out to the, the bone pile, and there's all this stuff, like there's, there's copper cable and, and pipe that maybe got used once or not at all, or whatever, and so, it was kind of hard for some of them to understand that, you know, if, if you're this wasteful in some areas, how can you be so tight on, on the budget on this side, but, but wasteful over here, and so I'm trying to apply some of this understanding with, with the, the citizens of our, of America, and really, I think the, the citizens want to know that we are diligently working with tight budgets, and, and they don't want to be finding these bone piles of, of wasteful monies, and with the understanding, assuming that, that all of the, the department heads and everything are working with a true budget, and, and on a snug budget, I think that is, that information right there is pretty valuable to the citizens. Being involved with the budgeting process is also explanatory to, to citizens in, in knowing where these monies are being used for, and what monies are, what monies are being used for what. After going out there, actually, we, you could, you could, they had a program that, that you could, if they, they weren't gonna use some of this stuff, you could apply for the usage of some of this scrap, and, and I told Dad back in the day, I think I was like, when I was old enough to drive, 16, 17, and, like, man, there's almost room for a, a company to come in and, and just, like, like waste management could do amazing in some of these areas, and maybe with the, maybe with the kickback back to the mine, and since then, maybe something's been developed, I don't know, but, just something that I noticed.
Mr. Dan, come here. We'll talk to you later. On Stolten, by now. And I think Stolten is one of the same lines with the prayer thing, there wasn't that prayer isn't a good thing, it was more along lines of 5% that might be uncomfortable in this situation, so you gotta be careful on how to preach, not so much that it's not allowed, or that it's illegal, it's how the approach to it is, so, you then put yourself in danger of like, we're gonna all gonna worship this coffee pot, or whatever, and then, you don't want to worship a coffee pot, so not a thing.
What's that? You do? There, there could be somebody out there that does, I don't know. And this is, there was actually, did you read that suggestion? I think that that's definitely something that needs to be gone, gone over with.
It's just like doing here, with human resources and everything else, there's one thing that falls into this category, then you end up paying for it.
This one?
Oh, I know, you can pray, I have no issue with it, I just, I have.
Oh, it was on this one, I think there was a point that was made in here that was very
But, I, I just think.
Helpful, and I was, I was thinking, oh, tan right there, I think that should probably be considered, and. Just so the commentary of the prayer is appropriate, it's more or less what that is focusing on.
Who's gonna say it's appropriate?
You may think it's not appropriate, but the person, and they may think it is appropriate.
Right.
That's where the whole issue comes from.
Well, it might be, but, I guess. Well, it might be, but I guess, where I was at, too, also with that, was the, the agreeance of the points that, that were made at that meeting. Was definitely an agreeance to that, although I was not going to back down from what I feel is correct, posing, posing certain, posing certain threats. I guess there's a possibility of, if you drive around with pneumatic tires, there's a possibility that you could get flat. There's a possibility for that. But because that possibility is there, it does not prevent us from continuing to be safe. Nor am I welcoming. If I see a bunch of screws laying out in the middle of the road, I'd swoop towards them. You know what I'm saying? Encouraging that problem. But no, I, I understand. It's not, it's not that I'm unaware of some of the possibilities there.
They're doing worship insane.
Are you all right?
They actually, they're just recognized as religious worship. They actually, they invented what they do, because he was gonna, like, withhold people, and they just said, you don't have to go searching for the person when ninety percent of the community is supposed to be faithful. So, anyway, yeah.
But I would say, I would say if that's, if that's red, this is, that is red, too, and understanding anybody can do whatever they choose. At that point, then, you know, additional action is gonna have to be taken.
Never about going corporate.
That's what I heard, was people were afraid you were gonna get sued. I don't know who said that.
Well, one commissioner said it, but, you know, would you welcome it if it happened? Which, I get that. I mean, I'm not saying that's a bad statement, but it's, I just, that was not the intent, the, the spirit of the conversation on my end, and I think my end, too, you know. And we could start arguing about something else. What do we wanna pick? Religion?
I don't wanna argue about anything.
Politics?
Those, those two right there, I mean, they feed on themselves.
Hey, was it cold enough for you three weeks ago?
It was.
It wasn't for me. I like the cold.
You do? Forty below, is that, is that good?
Well, just want something to argue about.
Well, something good that came, thanks, Stan.
I wanted it cold because it kills more pine beetles and the bugs and stuff next year.
Well, some, we did something that kinda required the forty below temps, and we took the, you guys take a bowl of hot water?
We did.
Yeah, and throw it over your head?
Thomas went out and shorced.
That's impressive.
Oh, yeah.
Thirty below when he's outside and shorts.
That was cool. It just, yeah.
Tell somebody to try it with cold water, though.
Well, it freezes faster if it's hot.
Cold water, you'll get wet when it's hot over you. Hot water will freeze.
It's pretty cool, yeah.
I was impressed.
I saw one where they took a, a picture of hot water, and then you, you just pour it.
Oh, was that legit?
Tracy tried it, and it didn't work. I think they were in Alaska.
Oh, I mean, I can't.
But it, like, made the swirl.
Right, and it followed it up? I was trying to figure...
I don't know if it's legit.
I can't even tell what's computer processed and whatever anymore. It seems like they're so good at it.
The computer generated stuff. It used to be pretty great.
It used to be. You're like, oh, now it's pretty hard to detect it. You know, if I was to, to like, like, cut my face out of a picture and like, superglue it onto a, that's what my digital processing would look like, and they're, they're a lot better than that. No, I can't tell. Like, say, for instance, if, if there was one, and then they, you know, there's people that'll do things in reverse.
I'm not texting.
Like, it could melt it and look like it's going up it back in reverse. I don't know.
That's it?
That's it.
I understand.
But...
Mine's even worse.
I know. Well, that's what scares me, is what taxes are gonna receive.
Well, if you notice, some of the ones that are screaming the loudest about their property taxes going up...
Is that one? Not yet. Is that in this one?
Are causing it. The ones that came in from out of state, bought it, paid too much for it, and they were thinking they were gonna save. Then their property taxes doubled because they paid three times what it was worth.
Down at Waco, I sat at a table with the Teton family girls. That was interesting. They had two hundred and some people who made an official complaint about their taxes, and they ended up only having like twenty come through the whole system. But the worst offender had bought an eight million dollar property out by the Tetons, and was really upset about his taxes. But when he came in...
Is it?
We're still in session.
We're still in. Come on in.
When he came in, he brought three lawyers.
Yeah, he did.
Yes, very interesting.
Yeah, his attorney fees were way more than taxes for probably five years.
So, yeah, it was very interesting to hear their take on it. Very, very interesting. They had different problems than we do.
Well, cracks, we have two. People jump in their vehicle and drive, come to buy groceries, and then pay taxes on their groceries and fuel.
I think the, you did those, right? That's you. Somebody else went first? That, four from this one?
I did do that one.
Oh, you did this one.
I did that, sent it to that one. He did a lot too much.
Oh, okay, I'll give you that one.
Yeah, there we go. This is blowing my mind. Surprise Chris can treat some Black Hills kind of... Ramen noodles from Black Hills.
Ooh. Make your hair turn colors.
You must help your fairgrounds, Kat.
I noticed that they have never done that before, and now all of a sudden, they've started doing that. I was gonna, try to get to look at that.
Fairgrounds.
Yeah, that's not something that any other department's done.
That's cool.
Well...
I guess you got a point there.
That's what they should be eating, you guys know the mouse.
My signature.
Unfortunately, yes. I don't even know what Garrett is trying to do with this.
What? Oh, yeah. You're like, hey, Cindy's back, what the?
No, with your signature, it looks...
Oh, what am I trying to do?
You didn't even sign anything that went by you today.
Well, I know. I'm gonna make sure you're on the ball.
Everything had to go back to you.
Thanks for catching that.
Why? Garrett didn't sign anything. What happened to the recorder?
It's right here behind the nameplate.
Oh.
Yeah, that's how you...
Some convict stole it.
What? I was like, he took it.
We had all sorts of discussions now, but there's nobody in here.
Might be. Open right up.
Discuss the air and everything.
Recorder's on, it's not off.
Might not be empty for long.
I have all these guys watching, too.
Probably the fastest you guys have done these ever. I know, I have one, I think, to replace the drum.
And you said these are the same windows you have in your office, Becky? Are these the same windows that you guys have over there? They are, in their lakey?
Oh, my gosh. I, I freeze because I have a window right here, and I have one right behind me.
Yeah.
And I talked to the historical preservation board, and they said, "As long as it does not disturb the appearance of the building," but Lucille wants to get send you guys a letter first, so that you have that.
Oh, hell, yeah.
Yep. So, I need to get with Brandon and tell him that he can go ahead and start getting that bid.
Yeah.
And so...
The assessor's office looks damn nice.
The assessor's office windows went back to the way they originally were. When they replaced these, they changed the appearance of the building.
Yep.
They need to go back to the rounded. If you look at those...
Oh, I see.
See how they're rounded?
Right, round top.
They need to go back to that.
That does look cool.
Because they changed it when they put these in. And that office is so much warmer than the other ones. It's not even funny. So, they had a, a grant when I first started as clerk, and my very first meeting with the board gave that grant back, because the mass was too high. They had a grant to replace all the windows, but... They freeze, and then it lets hot air in in the summertime, so.
Right.
But Brandon had them measure them, and I don't know if they were working on getting him a quote, or if they already gave him one. So I'll ask him. But I don't think that the glass bricks were original.
No.
Mm-mm.
Them were a late sixties fan.
You could, you could build a shower with them, or...
I mean, it's cool. We could save them, and they could put them somewhere else. Not here, but...
Their insulation value is not very well.
You're gonna put them at the fairgrounds? Have somebody come out and dust them every now and then?
Hey, replace the rock wall with them, so you can see what kind of dirt's behind it.
So I did remind Eric he needs to get quotes for that. Hopefully, it can be done before prayer.
Okay.
Well, you need to have Dave come in and do a voucher for their ten thousand dollars, too. And they got paid for last year's.
When he said that, I had to bite my tongue so hard. That was so rude. They did. I think there was a confusion about years, because here's the thing, even though it's a fiscal year, the fair is...
Right.
We did get them.
Year from January to December.
I feel like we could have this conversation a hundred more times, and we'd still be in the same boat.
It doesn't matter when they get it. It's not fiscal year. It's year, January to December. The budget we did last year is for this year, right? So that's... And they did get it, and we've explained it to them. Marty explained it to them. It's very confusing.
You need to go back through, and if you could find those checks where we did that, because we actually caught them up.
Yes. And here's the thing, where they feel that they're not getting it, they had a slush fund, and they weren't supposed to. And the commissioners had them deplete that slush fund, and so it's just so frustrating. I've got that batch right here. Trying to keep, keep track of it.
Getting hungry looking at that. Pizzas, pepperoni.
Got sixteen minutes, and I'm vailing. I gotta be in Gillette at one or two thirty.
You do?
Yeah.
Oh, you need these ones.
I'm gonna use that as a batch one.
He's got three signatures.
Three. I'll put them up there.
You were putting those?
I'll deal with those.
You'll deal with those, and I'll deal with these. Are those all done?
Those both have three on them.
Except there's one that we...
I pulled one. I wrote, I wrote it on my sheet, what batch.
The batch four.
Batch four, invoice one.
And I still have to make a motion to approve this, just to know.
That's the one I pulled. You wanna look at it?
And this is for a coin. Is that what it is?
Hmm?
Coin?
Two hundred coins.
Two hundred, the quantity.
Coins?
What are, what are the coins for? It says there's gonna be, attached will be the pictures. The one with the truck will be the front, and the one with the lightning will be the back.
Well, if that's for the office down in the basement, he was just told where, um, they're not reimbursing for a lot of stuff that they used to reimburse, so the county's gonna be short a lot of stuff.
What are the coins used for?
They give to people around the nation.
Giveaways.
Oh, is that what they are?
That's what they usually, when you get a coin in a little plastic pouch, they're usually just freebies to give away. Here's batch one, it's yours. That's what they have to prove. You've got three.
That I already took away.
Yeah.
That's a plan.
And this is an invoice, so it's already been purchased. Correct?
I would say. You got my attention, anyway.
Department, department challenge coins.
Oh, yeah.
That's what they're named.
That's what they are. They're... That's what they are, they're to give away then.
Whatever bugs were.
Is that a bug?
No, it's a receipt that wants to hump up.
Thought you were killing bugs with that gun.
I slap it with my sweaty palm, it stays put. No, but we've been, we've got like flies have been a problem.
Flies, we've got flies and box elders bug so bad in our vaults in here.
Oh, really? So it's a thing?
Yeah. And we even had the guy come and spray the courthouse and they're still terrible.
You can find where they're coming in, get some mouse sticky traps and tape them like on the wall right where they're coming in or something. They'll all stick to it.
Gross, we have to, we have to vacuum every day.
It works better than anything else I've found to do.
And the flies, we're having to vacuum like the stairs again, like it's summer.
It's interesting.
We got, oh, it's called Tempo. It's a spray you mix, it's pretty concentrated, pretty tempo.
Well, see, the guy came and sprayed already.
But see, we'd like, like on our house?
Uh huh.
You catch wind out of the north, so you go on the south side of the house, open the windows and you spray it so it's on the screen.
Okay.
It stays on the screen if you don't get washed off. It kills flies, no, you don't even see it. Like I sprayed the, the windows inside my shop four years ago. Flies could honestly die right now, four years ago.
Wasps. We even had the wasps in there too.
I just thought it was coming in from my wood stack, but it wasn't, it wasn't that.
Get big old black ants coming in.
There are some, yeah.
No, we have black ants.
Yeah, they're small right now, but.
They look like carpenter ants.
Sometimes I bring up some wood in and it'll, it'd warm up and the black, big old black ants would start crawling out of it.
Take my flamethrower to them.
How they do it on their new record?
What's that?
So I give mine back to Katie.
You did?
Well, and here's the thing, I don't even know why I just took it all between yesterday.
I'm sure that if there's any other company using it, my somebody's gonna.
Yeah, I don't need mine. So I put it on the bottom.
You might want your bottom.
Which one?
That one from Gilbert.
Oh, this one?
Uh, yeah.
Are you done with this one?
Uh, not some looking up.
I'm almost done, it's okay.
It's just, uh, general expense.
Is it?
Yeah, I looked it up. He's got salary and he's got.
That's his account, he has two accounts.
Yep.
That seems like a lot of money for.
Well, for a giveaway, I don't know how.
It's like handing five dollars bills out.
Right.
Four dollars a piece.
Being serious.
Did you shred all the left and right now?
Oh, you got that one?
Do you wanna pull it or do you?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull it. I wanna discuss it, just send it down to the far end, see what he thinks of it.
One, two, three, four, who's lacking? Is yours on there though?
So far.
No, I don't.
It's not been good.
But it's, yeah.
What does that say, department challenge coin? Repair the word out of his online security budget?
Yep. Utility bills, they're easy ones. Utility bills, they're easy ones.
It's a challenge coin, just like a appreciation thing?
No, it's just to give away.
Does it stimulate security? Well, I mean, if it's out of that account. What's the connection?
And they're not worth anything individually really, so I guess you can't say that you're giving something.
You can't redeem them for anything.
Yeah.
I wish, I thought. Maybe they're like.
Maybe it was Gilbert.
Maybe they're like worth five hundred dollars.
Cost something to.
Cost something to make them. You gonna sign it?
Probably. And that's a serious conversation, that's gotta happen.
I like Skittles.
Well, you gotta start sometime.
I like Skittles until cars brought me those freeze dried ones, I'm like, they don't taste right. Do you like those?
The wild berry freeze dried?
I just don't, I like the chewy. I guess I gotta chew on it, if it doesn't stick in my teeth.
Freeze dried.
Oh, good, suck on it for an afternoon.
So Scott, we went to the Beekeeper this weekend. And Scott was giving away honey. So we.
He was?
We went and got some strawberry and jalapeno.
Ooh, yeah, jalapeno.
I haven't tried it.
It's way better than you'd think.
Is it?
I'm thinking jalapeno honey.
So what did you eat around?
Um, like a blue cracker.
Okay, those, these are them.
Or, or like a bagel?
Well, see, I love bagels. I thought about it just like on cream cheese and then put the honey on it and then eat it with crackers.
It's not, it's not as jalapeno-y, it's just got a little, a little heat there, it doesn't really taste like.
Cause he has the strawberry, the jalapeno and the blueberry. So Tracy and Thomas bought the strawberry and jalapeno.
Three, 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 so I've got threes.
Ooh, one more.
Get that in it? Oh.
So I'm gonna go with it, that's a good one. Can't leave yet. One more thing to do. You have to prove, but one's gonna be discussed.
Ellen, what's the board's pleasure on this one? It's for.
What's, what's the number?
It's a warrant, seven, one, nine, oh, seven, out of batch number four. For seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
What's the account, Ed?
It's twenty-one, it's clear, it's clear at the back, it's, the key's got two accounts. There's emergency management salary and then yes, the other account. One hundred, zero, zero, twenty-one.
It's an expense account.
I mean, that's more than we paid for having our handbook published. Explanation anyway.
Not it, go have a word with him.
Not it.
You can bring him, you wanna bring him next meeting, can't wait and then.
Well, I hate to make a vendor wait on the money.
Right.
When they've actually did the, they're good.
Oh, they've already got them.
I would say this is an invoice.
I guess I would say sign it, but we, it's this kind of thing, we need to start talking to people without, seriously. I don't know.
I guess.
What do you gentlemen think?
I guess sign and have him here at the next meeting on the agenda, say, hey, this is the kind of stuff we gotta cut.
I made a motion to approve vouchers.
Second.
Motion properly seconded, in discussion. One more, one more people to turn on it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those. You need to adjourn.